Good evening, everyone. We'll go and get started in the city council meeting for April 21st, 2008. Just a reminder, a couple of things. If you do have cell phones or pagers, if you could please turn those off. The other thing is, if you wish to speak to any item on tonight's agenda, there are speaker request form over here to your left, over by the media table. If you could fill those out and also put the agenda number, so we make sure we don't overlook you, and just turn them into jacket at the end of the dais here. That will make sure we'll recognize you as the item comes up. First thing, as always, on the agenda is a roll call in determination of the quorum. Jackie, roll call, please.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Hadcock.
Here.
Hurlbut.
Grabkey.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Wyff and Butt.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Broger.
Here.
Quaker?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Well, you do have a quorum. As always, the next thing on the agenda is our invocation. If you could all please stand. The invocation is now be given by Deanne Farrar from Christian Science, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I've chosen to read a poem by John Greenleaf Whittier, as used in a hymnal in our church. Dear Lord and Father of us all, forgive our foolish ways. Reclothe us in our rightful mind. In purer lives thy service find, in deeper reverence praise. In simple trust, like theirs who heard beside the Syrian sea, the gracious calling of the Lord. Let us, like them, without a word, rise up and follow thee. Drop thy still dues of quietness, till all our striving cease. Take from us now the strain and stress, and let our ordered lives confess the beauty of thy peace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next thing, as always, on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I do have a couple of notes here. We do need to move item number 40 to follow item number 94. That is a bid. And I also show an 88B. This would be Robert Ellis. He's bringing forward quotes to the Canyon Lake Dam. So that will be 88B. Any additional? I also have a request to add items under items from Alderman, from Alderman Deb Hadcock, item number 97, which is an update on the Mayor's Committee on Disabilities. This is an update. Any additions? Please turn on your light, and I'll recognize you. We'll get those on the agenda. Any additions? Any additions? If not, the chair -- whoop. Okay. Chair would look for a motion to approve the agenda by moving item 40 after item number 94, adding an 88B and a 97A, please.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. A discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We also need to approve the minutes of the April 7th and the March 25th, 2008 special council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and second for approval. A discussion on that motion. A discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. We will now go to awards and recognitions, and if I could have Dave come join me here. There we go. Well, this is actually a special night, because it's not often that you get to give an award to somebody that taught you how to fish when you were a young child. I haven't seen Dave in almost 20 years, but he is actually the uncle of a dear friend of mine that I went to high school with. And so I was quite surprised when he walked in. Our recognition, and I didn't quite put two and two together until he reminded me that how bad of a fisherman I was. Let's go ahead and do this. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the April 2008 Veteran of the Month recognition to David J. Schramm. David served in the U.S. Marine Corps from November 1968 to November 1971. His basic training and his infantry training was in California, and then was off to Vietnam. From June of 1969 to August of 1970, he was a corporal in E-4, providing convoy security and engaging the enemy when necessary. David was then stationed at Da Nang, Vietnam, during his wartime duties. He was honorably discharged in November of 1971, earning the Vietnam Service Medal in the VCM. David is a volunteer with Rapid City Vet Center. He serves two to three days a week, and he has so for the past 15 years. He has given of himself without pay or reward, and takes the extra steps to assess veterans with their needs and referrals. The first to volunteer is David. He's compassionate and eager to enable veterans to make sure that they do have their benefits and all the referrals that they need. He is a model Vietnam veteran and a credit to himself in the United States Marine Corps. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And we didn't tell David this, but we always give the opportunity for all of our veterans to stand up and say a few words.
Well, I'm not much of a public speaker, but the Vet Center has been a real good opportunity for me to meet some veterans and run across some old friends that I haven't seen for years in this job I ever had.
Very good. There we go. David, why don't you come over here, and we'll get a nice picture.
Thank you.
Come a little bit over here. What we'll do is we'll do this, and that way they can get it on -- we'll get it on our website, and, yep, just like that, and away we go.
Is there a -- Dave without uniforms?
Uh-oh.
Just giving this to present today.
Oh.
Yeah, that looks better.
It's in uniform now. Very good. Thank you, Dave. Congratulations.
You bet.
Great to see you. Okay. Robert, you want to come up? Let's see. Is Jim with us? Or, I'm sorry, John Wagner?
John couldn't make it.
John couldn't make it. Okay. Very good. Well, Rapid City has always been privileged to have the highest quality water, and we're very pleased to receive the word from the Department of Environmental and Natural Resources from peer that we actually had received an award again. And this award basically goes to basically providing safe drinking water, and I'm going to let Robert talk a little bit about this, but I'm going to also present the certificate to Robert and his Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Why don't you come up and tell us just a little bit about the award?
The award is a recognition by the Department, the State Department of Environment and Natural Resources. They oversee all water and wastewater systems, and they simply wanted to recognize our staff for doing a good job providing high-quality drinking water. We're very blessed that we have a good source of water, and just I want to thank the council and the public for recognizing the hard work that our staff does. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We also have a number of employee recognitions. Is Mark here? Is Mark here?
Mark's here.
Where yet? Come on up, Mark. I'm sorry. Mark has been with us for 20 years now, and with that, I'd like to introduce our new fire chief to say a few words about Mark, and we'll let -- give Mark the opportunity to step up and say a few words. Chief?
Just a little bit about Mark. He's 20 years. He and our next 20-year, they started April 18th, and Mark is our captain in our training division. He's been there for about 10 years, and he kind of coordinates all our training activities and does an absolutely great job. He's one of those individuals as the new chief. He's in the office right next door, and he's given me a lot of direction and just an absolutely terrific employee, and it's, you know, an honor to recognize him tonight.
As the chief mentioned, myself and Battalion Chief Powell, who will be honored here shortly, have managed to wear out, I think this will be our fourth chief, so we'll see how things go and whether we leave or you do first, so. Yeah. Let's get over here and take a picture real quick, and -- What? Thank you. Now, wait a second. What service were you in? Always prepared?
I was a voice count. I was there for --
Okay. For the newer council members, how I knew Mark was many years ago, before we got all the fancy cameras here. Mark used to stand in the back and actually with the old video recorder, record all of our meetings, so. Got it? Thank you. Congratulations, Mark.
Mark also looks awfully good in a dress. He was in the Miss Hermosa contest, and they raised about $1,000, I think, or more.
Eighty-five hundred.
How much?
Eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five hundred down in Hermosa, so if you want to see him in a dress.
Yes. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
Robert? There again, we're also privileged to have another long-term, 20-year employee of the Rapid City Fire Department. Chief, I'll let you do the honors again.
Okay. And this is Battalion Chief Rob Powell, and again, he came on with Mark. He actually runs our A shift. He's an operations battalion chief, promoted to that position about five years ago, and he would be one of what I consider part of our senior management staff. He was talking to me today. I asked him, you know, what should I say about you? And, you know, basically, after we got done with saying, you know, he's on the Wildland Regional IC Incident Command Team. He has a lot of Wildland expertise. He works in the area and actually all over the country, but what we really talked about was how much he absolutely loves his job. He just has a passion for his job, so with that, congratulations, Rob.
Congratulations, Mayor. Did you say a few words?
Wow, 20 years, huh, Mark? Seems like it was just a few days ago. No, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve my hometown community, and I look forward to continuing on for, I don't know, a while.
Let's get a picture here. Sir. I know Jenna's -- Jenna, come on up. Mr. Preston, please join us. There again, Jenna Miller has been with us also for 20 years. She is -- works in the finance office, and when I say that, I always tease her, because she's the one that actually keeps track of all the candy that I bring down, so when you say that she's a bean counter, she really is, because she guards those jelly beans very well. Mr. Preston, would you do us the honors?
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to say, Jenna is one of our accounting clerks in the finance office. She's in charge of fixed assets, health insurance, accounting for that, lease parking. She also does, let's see, payroll taxes, and any claims against the city, she handles all. She's also a backup for a number of other areas, and she's probably the one that answers the phone when you call. Jenna is a very nice lady, and she's a pleasure to work with, and congratulations on 20 years.
You want to say? Okay. We won't portion. We'll just get a picture. We embarrassed you enough, right? Okay. One more here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hope you stick around for another 20. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next thing on the agenda is the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the city council president. Are there any -- is there any discussion as far as public, general public comments? We do not have a speaker request form. Okay. If you could, go ahead and come forward. Now, just a reminder, typically what we do is we do a lot, three minutes each, and if you would please come forward. Yep? And identify yourself for the record.
Okay. Which, are they both working?
You're fine. Just go ahead and talk away.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Liz Fulton, and I do believe you all received a copy of my letter regarding the Rushmont Building. My views still stand on that, and there will be, there is a petition in the works at the moment for the city businesses and for the general public regarding the Rushmont Building. And I just wanted you to know that I'm here, and this is the first time I've ever been to a council meeting, so forgive me if I don't seem like I'm doing the right thing here, but I just wanted you all to know me and to know my views on this building. I am very much opposed to it. I don't believe Rapid City needs such a building. I've lived in many places in this country over the last 40 years, Chicago, New York, and I've lived in Rapid City for 20 years, and I've met a lot of tourists from all over Europe in the 20 years. And the thing that they say to me, isn't it wonderful that Rapid City does not have tall buildings? They mention the building down on Ninth Street, the apartment building, and they say, what a nice saw that is. And I agree with them. I've always thought that, ever since I arrived here. And so I think to put, you know, more tall buildings in Rapid City would take away from what we have here. We have a lovely little town. I'm very proud of it. I'm very proud to live here, and I don't think we warrant a skyscraper. And that's just about all what I want to say. As you know, you have my letters, so you know how I feel about everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would have an item for this period, which is the general public comment period? This is for any items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no further, we will move on. We are on to the non-public hearing items. These are items 3 through 97, and the chair would look to open for the public comments on items 3 through 73, please. We have a motion and a second to open the public comment period on items 3 through 73. Discussion on that. We do have a couple of speaker request forms, I believe. Okay, we do have a speaker request form from -- Very good. Thank you. We do need to take a vote on opening the public comment period. In discussion, let's see, we do need a motion. Oh, you had a motion. Okay. Caught it. Okay. Motion on the floor is to open for public comment period. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We are in the public comment period. We do have a speaker request form from Tammy Carpenter on item number 67. Oh, I'm sorry, is it Jamie?
Yes.
Can't tell if it's a J or T.
Good evening, city council members. I guess this is where I talk, and you listen, and nobody asks questions, so there's a stipulation, I think, number 13, in that number 67 to widen West Nike. I'm telling you now that it will take probably eminent domain to get my land for me off that. You will need part of my land if the developer doesn't do it, since the developer asked for this, and it's a stipulation from the Pennington, or from your planning commission. I strongly suggest he use the land that he's developing to widen West Nike. I own half of that West Nike road, and I'm not giving it up. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We also have a speaker request form from James Carpenter, and also on item number 67.
I'd like to say the same thing that my wife just said. There is a stipulation, number 13, from the planning commission that states that the developer will widen West Nike Road to 100 feet, and I just want to let you guys know that I will do everything in my power to prevent that land from being taken for the project, and also feel that the developer needs to plot out his property to obtain that stipulation requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further, speaker request form. The chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period for items 3 through 73. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Chair would ask any items, excuse me, 3 through 73, that anyone would like to have removed from the consent calendar item. I am showing items 23 and 40, which we've already moved. Any additional, please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 32.
Very good. Item 32. Any additional? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 8, 51, and 55, please.
Sorry, 8, 51, 55.
1 and 55.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson. Okay, very good. Any additional? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve consent items 3 through 73, with the exception of 8, 20, 32, 40, 51, and 55. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to, this is on, did you have an additional item? Go ahead. We'll recognize Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
I have a question, and that is that we have items, the growth management and consent items appear to have different recommendations written in the margin of our dais copy. Will this mean we are approving them with the written-in stipulations, or should they be individually addressed? That's just my question.
No. It'll be per the recommendations. Okay? Okay. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Just a question regarding the same question that Alderman Hurlbut. Are these recommendations from the committee, or are these recommendations that come from other than the committee, the ones that say approve? Are they committee recommendations?
Let's go to, let's see, Growth Management, Bob, I assume these are, these are the planning commission's recommendations.
Alderman Johnson, you still have the floor, sir.
Okay. You're, Bob was speaking specifically about the growth management and not the ones that are written in approval prior to that?
Yes, that is correct. I believe what he was talking about was items 64 through item 73. Okay? Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar items 3 through 73, with the exception of 8, 20, 32, 40, which has been moved, 51, and 55. Any further discussion on that? We did have a motion, if I'm not mistaken, and a second. Okay? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. We are on to item number eight, and we will go to Alderman Lloyd Lecoury to read that in, please.
It's a request for Mayor to set a property owners' meeting regarding East Anamosa Street right-of-way and bring forward a report to the council. And I guess I'd move for approval.
Yep. Do you have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two comments. First of all, it's my understanding, when it comes to right-of-way reductions, that council action occurs, or council action is taken in order to reduce right-of-way. I'm not aware that a council action was taken at any point to reduce the right-of-way from the original consultant recommendation, so it's my understanding that the original recommendation still stands, and so I'm assuming that that will be this, you know, the main topic at the meeting with the landowners. Secondly, I did not see a timeframe in terms of a report to come back to city council, and I'm wondering if the motion maker's intent is to include a 30-day timeframe, perhaps, so that we can have a report at some point.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for our public works director, Robert Ellis. My understanding is that there's been some discussion with the property owner of record, and that that right-of-way has been agreed upon. If that's correct, I think we could probably table this.
Robert?
The largest landowner Northwestern Engineering was contacted this week. We explained to them that we'd prefer to have 100 feet of right-of-way, along with 20 feet of easement, and that'd be 10 feet on each side for a total of 120 feet, for the purposes of this project. While it's not exactly right-of-way, it is easement that's needed for water, sewer, and other utilities, and they have agreed to that in principle.
Alderman Johnson, you still have the floor, sir.
Having spoke, I can't make the motion to table. I was the one that brought this forward, so if another council member would like to move to table, that would help here. Thank you.
Okay, we have a tabling motion and a second. No discussion on tabling motions. We'll go straight to the vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes, with one no from Alderman Sam Quaker. We're on to item number 20, please.
Authorized mayor and finance officer to sign a professional service agreement with Albertson Engineering, Inc. for design blocks. Block 75 parking structure, third level addition, for the mountain knot to exceed $171,790. Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I had not commented on this during public works, but I do have strong feelings, based on contact I've made with some constituents, that including the parking lot to the east of Fifth Street, in the view of many, is not the best use of this greenway space. And so as this proposal goes forward, I would like to have some discussion of alternative ways of handling, I recognize there is some needs for parking, but I also believe that this may or may not be the best use of that greenway space. Now, in discussing this with yourself and others on the council, there has been the suggestion that it would be my obligation to offer an alternative site for parking if I'm going to bring forward an objection to locating parking at this particular site. Frankly, I don't think that's my job. My job is to say what I think ought to happen in the spaces throughout the community, in this particular one. I really question whether this is the appropriate thing to do in this particular site. I'm not opposed to any of the parking on the west side and any of the terrorist suggestions and so forth, but as we move forward with this proposal, as it stands right now, those are to be included as part of this, as we seek direction in building this, this particular action would be a part of that, and I just want to be on record as saying that I don't, I don't support expanding the parking
right-of-way and bring forward a report to the council. And I guess I'd move for approval.
Yep. Do you have a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two comments. First of all, it's my understanding when it comes to right-of-way reductions that council action occurs, or council action is taken in order to reduce right-of-way. I'm not aware that a council action was taken at any point to reduce the right-of-way from the original consultant recommendation, so it's my understanding that the original recommendation still stands, and so I'm assuming that that will be this, you know, the main topic at the meeting with the landowners. Secondly, I did not see a timeframe in terms of a report to come back to city council, and I'm wondering if the motion maker's intent is to include a thirty-day timeframe perhaps that we can have a report at some point.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for our Public Works Director, Robert Ellis. My understanding is that there's been some discussion with the property owner of record, and that that right-of-way has been agreed upon. If that's correct, I think we could probably table this.
Robert?
The largest landowner Northwestern Engineering was contacted this week. We explained to them that we'd prefer to have a hundred feet of right-of-way along with twenty feet of easement, and that'd be ten feet on each side for a total of one hundred and twenty feet for the purposes of this project. Well, it's not exactly right-of-way, it is easement that's needed for water, sewer, and other utilities, and they have agreed to that in principle.
Alderman Johnson, you still have the floor, sir.
Having spoke, I can't make the motion to table. I was the one that brought this forward, so if another council member would like to move to table, that would help here. Thank you.
Okay, we have a tabling motion and a second. No discussion on tabling motions. We go straight to the vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Alderman Sam Quaker. We're on to item number twenty, please.
Authorized mayor and finance officer to sign a professional service agreement with Albertson Engineering, Inc. for design blocks. Block seventy-five parking structure, third level addition, for the mountain knot to exceed a hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are on to item thirty-two. Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-three. Item twenty-three, please.
Authorized staff to seek proposals for Rushmore Plaza Civic Center parking improvements. Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I had not commented of this during Public Works, but I do have strong feelings based on contact I've made with some constituents, that including the parking lot to the east of Fifth Street, in the view of many, is not the best use of this greenway space. And so as this proposal goes forward, I would like to have some discussion of alternative ways of handling, I recognize there is some needs for parking, but I also believe that, that this may or may not be the best use of that greenway space. Now, in discussing this with yourself and others on the council, there has been the suggestion that it would be my obligation to offer an alternative site for parking if I'm going to bring forward an objection to locating parking at this particular site. Frankly, I don't think that's my job. My job is to say what I think ought to happen in the spaces throughout the community, in this particular one. I really question whether this is the appropriate thing to do in this particular site. I'm not opposed to any of the parking on the west side, and any of the terrorist suggestions and so forth, but as we move forward with this proposal, as it stands right now, those are to be included as part of this, as we seek direction in building this, this particular action would be a part of that, and I just want to be on record as saying that I don't, I don't support expanding the parking to the east side of Fifth Street. And I would hope that as this proposal comes forward, we're offered an alternative. I feel strongly that we haven't spent any time talking about the possibility of using parking throughout our community, and urging our, the citizens who use, who are attending Civic Center events, I don't, I think there's some real merit in considering more shuttling of folks around. Parking is an expensive proposition, although I do recognize that this is a less costly suggestion that is often brought forward, but it seems judicious on the part of us as council members to consider carefully the possibility of encouraging our citizens to realize that if they really want to use taxpayer dollars in the very best way, shuttling is offering an opportunity to better utilize existing parking lots. And so I would hope that as this proposal moves forward, some of those alternative ways of dealing might be a part of the discussion, whereas as it stands right now, it's pretty clear that the proposal would include, I think it's six hundred and seventy thousand dollars to build that parking lot, if I'm not mistaken. So I would urge my colleagues to at least give us the opportunity for this proposal to include some alternatives that would allow for either parking in another location, or a serious look at a shuttling kind of arrangement, because I think the best thing about that is that the Civic Center parking lot could be used better during the day, and we shuttle employees to use park employee cars at the Civic Center, and then the alternative is for Civic Center events, there becomes more. And I, I would hope that we might add that to this proposal, and I would make a motion to that effect if that would be the appropriate step to take.
Alderman Olson, could you, just for clarification, just state your motion.
My motion would be to include alternatives to the use of the east Fifth Street area that's being proposed for parking.
I might turn to the city attorney. Would you recommend that be an amendment or a substitute motion? It seems substantively different than the motion on the floor, so I would assume that's a substitute motion.
I think you should treat it as a motion to amend the request for proposals, and then if it is approved by the, by the body, then vote on the request for proposals as amended.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll speak to the amendment. I did want to speak to the original motion, but my comment would be on the amendment that this is a, we're seeking professional consultant services for the design and construction and administration of these improvements, which is regarding the, the facilities to be constructed. I'm not certain that that's where you ought to look at other alternatives. That should be away from this motion, so I would not support the amendment at hand. It should not be included in the RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Kreppke, and there again, just, just a reminder, and thank you, Alderman Johnson, for reminding us, we do need to stick fairly close to the subject at hand, and that is the amendment proposal that is on the floor. With that, Alderman Bill O'Kreppke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just for the clarity of, for the people in the audience and people in the, and on TV and elsewhere, could I get a, could we draw, take a picture of what we're talking about? What's the proposed parking that we're looking at? I know that, I know the, the newspapers did a fine job putting to, you know, putting that out, but things change, and, and so if we can have the latest and greatest, that'd be good for all of us. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna allow just a little bit of latitude here, because it's a little bit outside of the scope, but I think this is sort of background information to the main motion, so. Did we have a, oh, that is a good point. Did we have a second to the motion to amend? Okay, we had a second for discussion. Okay, with that, Mr. Ellis, if you could give us a quick rundown?
Okay. The, the exhibit here shows two proposed areas. The five hundred, the five hundred space parking lot, surface parking lot located right here is on the east side of Fifth Street, which is located right here. This is the existing parking lot. Simply look at it and adding another five hundred spaces immediately to the east of it. The other location that's being considered is off of North Street, just north of the existing Civic Center. This is utilizing that limited space that's available as a greenway between the street and the existing parking lot, and trying to fit in another four hundred and seventy parking spaces in there. Those are the two areas of consideration.
Thank you. Mr. O'Kreppke, you still have the floor? Okay, if not, let's go to Alderman Bob Herobut.
Thank you, Mayor, and I seconded this for discussion. I'm not sure how I feel about it. I don't see a lot of harm in asking what other options there might be, and, and I think Alderman Johnson may be correct that this isn't the time to ask that, but one of the options I still want to be informed of is, is the possibility of constructing a parking ramp structure between the Holiday Inn and, and the Civic Center, which I think could pay for itself through, through revenues from the, from the parking, in the covered parking. There's a lot of reasons that works, and, and I think it's a long-term solution. I'd like to know what kind of ballpark that would be as an alternative, so I, I don't know if that fits with Alderman Olson's motion, but I don't see the harm in at least asking what are the options.
Mr. Ellis, you have a comment?
In speaking strictly on estimates of cost, when we take a look at the surface parking lot, the five hundred stalls right here, at a rough cost of twelve hundred dollars per stall for those five hundred, it'd be about six hundred thousand dollars. Now, when you go to a parking structure, it's much more expensive. A good planning number is seventeen thousand dollars per stall, so for that same improvement, it would be in the neighborhood of eight and a half to nine million dollars, so it's, it is substantially more expensive.
Alderman Herobut, you still have the floor, sir. Okay, very good. Further discussion? Further discussion? Let's go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you repeat that number again for the part, for the same?
You're looking at a diff-
Go ahead, please.
You're looking at a difference of maybe six hundred thousand dollars for a surface parking lot versus eight and a half million dollars for a vertical parking lot, parking garage for the same number of stalls.
Okay, I understand that too, but I, I guess that I'd have to agree with, or maybe there's some alternatives. I think to, probably to regrow that spot right where it was would be almost impossible, so that's priceless, in terms of numbers or dollars or green space, basically, in a neighborhood that, there's a little, what, softball field or baseball field for the club for boys, things like that. So I'm, I'm, I don't know how we amended or make a suggestion. I don't think it was ever discussed what some of the alternatives would be, at least to have that discussion.
I'm gonna interject just a little bit here. I did present this quite a bit actually to, I think it was Legal and Finance. A couple of things. The ball field itself, do you have that other slide, Robert? Is being proposed to be moved. It will not be eliminated. It will actually be moved to the south, so the, the improvement as far as the softball field will be replaced. There is about six hundred thousand dollars to actually do the, the surface lot, and there's been about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars identified for the overall project, so there is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make the additional improvements, including the softball fields, relocating the bike path, and also doing landscaping buffering within, within the area. I hope that, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does answer my question, but I just wanted to make sure that we're concerned about that, and I, and I see that.
The other thing, I think, and I'm just gonna make a quick comment, this plan that you see in front of you, just so you know where this came from, this was a master plan that the city council approved back in October of two thousand. So this, this was the plan that was approved by the city council, and just for the sake of clarity, because of the eleven-six-nineteen review, which came about in two thousand and four, there will be a public hearing process where we will have to go back out for public hearings before any improvements can be made in this area. So.
I appreciate the, the spirit of the conversation, because I just think it's important that we include the green spaces as we go forward. I know there's communities out there that are struggling, you know, to, to try to plan ahead. Planning ahead is obviously looking at green spaces and things like that, so I appreciate the mayor's comments in getting this on the, on the picture for the people at home and the people on council. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question about the process. We're still gonna go out for public hearings on this, but it, it seems to me that we've already defined the scope of work. So let's say, for instance, the public comment comes back much different than what the community would like to see in this area, regardless of what the council did in two thousand, then how does that then fit into this scope of work that's already created and that we possibly will approve tonight? So where does that, those changes from the public comment then fit into this new scope of work?
Mr. Ellis?
The process generally would work like this. We would, if this gets approved tonight, the consultant would prepare a plan to do the design on this. The design would be submitted to the Growth Management Department through an eleven-six-nineteen review process. It would be reviewed by the planning commission, and there would be an opportunity for the public to comment from that standpoint as far as the aesthetics. I don't know if there'd be an opportunity to reject the product, to actually reject the project through the planning commission, but that could be done as it comes back through the city council, as the advertising authority to do the construction would come forward, as well as the bid award. So there would be opportunity for the council to reject the project at that point.
Mr. Chapman, you still have the floor, sir.
Robert, thank you. I, I guess my question still is then, at what point do we amend the scope of work? I mean, if we use, whoever gets this, this project to do this, conduct this work, it then seems to me midstream because of public comment, that we then say, oh, now we'd like to add this to the scope of work. For example, what Alderman Herobut mentioned about putting a elevated parking structure somewhere, so then do we then put that sort of language in a new scope of work to say, oh, now we'd like to look at something else, so let's do that? I guess I'm trying to figure out how that actually gets done.
Mr. Ellis?
Perhaps the best way to address that public comment portion of this project would be to break this into phases, do a phase-one analysis where you're looking at the alternatives, bring that forward to the council, present those findings. The council could make a decision on how to move forward into phase-two, which would be the design of an actual parking structure, parking lot, whatever the case may be, but you could have an opportunity to review that set of alternatives, along with costs, pros and cons, and then decide how to move forward at that point.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you. My hope was just that we would have the opportunity to look at a sec, particularly on this, this particular piece of property, in my mind, is not the best place for an enlarged surface parking lot, and I have some concerns about the part generally. I do understand that this was approved in two thousand, but we all know until the current council votes, it's not done. And times change. We're now eight years later, and I at least wanted to have the opportunity for us to discuss the possibility of some other way of handling five hundred additional parking spaces, and I think it's legitimate to consider the possibility of some kind of shuttle service to utilize more fully our existing parking lots. And I don't think that that is incompatible with the general view of our community, that we exercise fiscal restraint. I think nothing probably would be better in terms of exercising fiscal restraint, because I think if you ask the community if they want more parking, they will say a resounding, at the Civic Center, they'll say a resounding yes. But when you talk about how do you pay for it in the best and smartest way, I'm not sure that that's a part of what, of this discussion. And so I at least hoped that we would have the opportunity to have an alternative, to include this as an alternative within the framework of the total project scope, and that was the only thing I was really asking for, is that this be offered as an alternative rather than clearly being a part of the scope of work. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hertgoff.
I appreciate Ms. Olson's concern, but I think the board of directors from the Civic Center did take in consideration alternatives, and cost is a major factor, and funding in this is a major factor, and that's why they came up with the five hundred parking spots where they did on the east side, and the five hundred parking spots to the north. I think if there was more alternatives, they would have been taken, plus the funding source, I think, is going to change. So when you, when you pick those alternatives, you also have to have another funding source. And, and again, I respect Ms. Olson's opinion because, on this, because she is the green space lady of Raven City, I think, and, and I, I mean that in a good way, Ms. Olson. But I think the Civic Center Board has considered that, and this has been a proposal for a long time in here. So I, I would urge the council to support what is happening and the proposals that are at, on the, on the table right now.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Mayor, I think I erred in, in speaking only to the amendment, because most people are varied from that, so I'm gonna vary a little bit now, even based on what you have. Again, I would ask you to defeat the amendment. The amendment should not include in the scope of work, and this we're talking about, from a paid person to design what we're asking them to design. If however we need more discussion, you should continue the item, or find somebody else to make other recommendations. What we're doing right now by this contract is we're, we're gonna get a consultant, and they're gonna be tasked again with design of what we're asking them to design. That is not the time to go back and find all the other alternatives. So again, I don't support the amendment, and further, I want to go back to what the mayor had said at Public Works as well, and I believe at Legal Finance, is this is not the last time this is gonna stop at the council's desks. We will have more discussion. There's eleven-six-nineteen review process, and I believe we should have some kind of a public hearing regarding the green space. I believe Karen has brought up an important issue. However, I believe that through the design of this as well, we can put in islands and trees, other than having a sea of asphalt with lines on it, number one. Number two, I believe we also need to address ingress and egress during large events at the Civic Center. Right now, we have several ingress and egress points, and we allow the use of only one, and it's kind of a nightmare. You add another five or six hundred stalls to that, it becomes an even bigger problem. But that's the kind of work I want to see that the consultant go. But again, if we're not comfortable with what we're bringing forward, I would rather continue the whole thing, or I would rather direct the staff concurrently at the same time to look at other alternatives to be brought forward before our RFP is, our consultant is approved and the contract led. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Motion on the floor is on the amendment only. Everyone clear on that? Additional questions? Not, we're gonna go to the vote. All those in favor of, okay, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Very good. Jackie, can you read back the amendment, please? If not, I, I think I can get it. What the amendment was, it was to amend to include proposals for alternative sites other than the Fifth Street side, I believe is what the amendment. Alderman Olson, is that correct? Okay, very good. Everyone clear on the motion? We're gonna go to a vote here. All is in favor of the amendment, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion fails, with one exception from Alderman Olson. We are back to the original motion. Original motion is to authorize the staff to seek proposals for the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center parking improvements. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number thirty-two.
Thirty-two is to request staff to draft a resolution in support of the South Dakota Municipal League's policy to allow worldwide web publication of council meeting minutes, and I move approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Bob Herobut.
Thank you, Mayor. I brought this item forward, and I don't think it requires a lot of discussion tonight. We're on a, a very generous timeframe here. I think we have until midsummer before we even need a recommendation on this issue. So what I think would be appropriate is for Jason Green to do as, as requested here in the motion, and that is to, to look at drafting a resolution. I'd like to be able to speak with Jason about some of the ideas that I have. I, I think the Journal did a nice story on this issue, and, but just to clarify, I think there's some misunderstanding. My intent certainly is not to limit access to people. It's, it's simply to save the city money. And the number of fifty-eight thousand that was, that was quoted, I don't know, that that includes all the costs- all the costs the city really has, when you add up staff time and, and hassles associated with coordinating these publications on a weekly basis. Then, if you consider, for example, the school district's financial crisis, I bet you they'd love to save 50 to 100,000 in the publication of their minutes. I think it's an issue worth exploring. I actually think that maybe option two would be the better option, and that is allow for continued publication, but make it a competitive bidding process so that we can, you know, I've, I've stated that it, to some degree, is a gravy train for the publisher, and I guess I'm suggesting maybe we thin the gravy a little while still making it available as an option. And I don't think there's a lot of harm in that. I also got a call from a Meade County Commissioner saying, Bob, I loved what you brought up, and we've tried it before and never been able to get anywhere. We'd like to, to be a part of this effort as well. So whether you go from the court systems to the counties to the school boards, if you aggregate the amount of money for publication of minutes statewide on an annual basis, you're probably pushing, I don't know, upwards of a half million to a million dollars a year in taxpayer dollars in tight times. And I'm, I wonder if that couldn't be cut in half simply by allowing competitive bidding, where there are competitor newspapers, such as in Rapid City's case, the Rapid City News Weekly. So those are my comments, and I, I don't have any hurry, other than just would like to coordinate with, with Yvonne Taylor of Municipal League, and with the other governmental entities that may also have a compelling interest in, in, in looking into the costs of allowing publication. One final item is that I think whoever is awarded a bid, if that's the way we go, should also be publishing in their online versions as well. I don't think the Journal currently publishes our minutes on its website, but only in the print version. And I think that, in any case, we should ask for web publication. And one final thing is we do have our minutes and video and audio all currently available so that folks can see verbatim what we're doing in both audio and video, as well as online. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate Alderman Hurlbut for bringing this forward, because I think this is an important discussion to have. I agree that this needs to be looked at, but I have a slightly different take on it than, than Alderman Hurlbut. You know, as, as the saying goes, it's best not to upset someone who buys ink by the barrel, and this has the potential to upset two barrels of ink, the Weekly News and the Rapid City Journal. And, and I'm certainly okay with, with that discussion, but I do believe that we need to be careful with passing a resolution to ask Municipal League to, and I'll just read the last sentence of the last paragraph, "Now therefore be it resolved by the Rapid City Common Council that the city supports amending state law to allow municipalities to comply with the requirement to publish its meeting minutes by doing so electronically, electronically on the worldwide web." What does that mean? I mean, where, where would it be published? Would it be published on an independent web server owned and operated by a media outlet, or would it be, or would it be operated by, by the city? And I think that it's important to, to have a level of independence and, and checks and balances in the process. And four or five years ago, there was a, there was an issue where minutes were actually missing from the city's website, and it was relating to a discussion regarding a prison site. It was a, a very controversial discussion in the state legislature. And for whatever reason, the minutes were not on the, the website, and I, they weren't on a... I believe that this, Mayor, I believe that this pertains directly to the discussion. So I would, I would like the ability to finish what I have to say, please.
Please go ahead, but please try and keep it to, the motion on the floor is for approval of a resolution.
And, and I'd like to directly state that I have some concerns with the resolution. I think the, the better option would be to allow for publishing of minutes in print and online on the media outlets' website, and also review the rules for becoming eligible, for the rules of eligibility to allow other newspapers to become newspapers of record. And in other words, allowing in, in this case, a review to see if the Rapid City Weekly News would, would qualify as a newspaper of record, so that there could be a bid process. I believe that this resolution, as it's written, you know, does not include the alternatives of a combination of print and online publishing, nor a bid process for media outlets. I'm not sure who the motion maker is, but if he would, Barbara, you the motion maker on this? Okay. So I guess I'll just see where the discussion goes, but I think that an amendment would be appropriate to this resolution, bring it forward for further discussion, to allow alternative, alternative processes as well. Thank you.
Was that in the form of a motion?
No, I'm listening to the rest of the discussion.
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As listed on your agenda, the item that you're considering is direction to me to prepare a resolution. I was able to get a draft of a resolution prepared, and I've provided hard copies of that to the council at this point, so you can consider that over the next two weeks. If you're comfortable with the resolution I've drafted, you could certainly approve it. But as Alderman Hurlbut indicated, there's not a great rush on this item, so if you want to take two weeks, digest what I presented to you, and suggest alternatives, you can certainly do that.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson, has not had the opportunity to speak on this topic.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I don't think it's necessary we, excuse me, spend this much time on this item. I'm going to move to send this back to Legal Finance for more review.
Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second to, to send this back to Legal and Finance. Discussion on that motion. There again, please keep in mind, the motion is to send back to the Legal and Finance Committee. Let's go to, Bob, did you want to speak to this item? If not, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm reading item number 32. It says, "Request staff to draft a resolution to support the South..." I mean, we're just approving them to, we're just asking them to draft something, right? We're not approving this tonight.
That's correct.
I don't see any reason to, to vote on it.
Okay. Very good. Substitute motion on the floor, send this back to Legal and Finance Committee. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to, let's see, 40. We have moved, we're on to item number 51. Item number 51, and that'd be Ald, let's see, Alderwoman Deb Hatcock, could you please read that in, please?
Fifty-one is approved resolution to establish additional staffing in the Community Resource Department. I move approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Sam Quaker.
Could I have a little bit more information as to what positions these would be?
Absolutely. Let's... Mr. Tome, who is our director, Community Resource Director? A short recap, please.
All right. There's two positions. One is an HR clerk, and the other one is a IT person that'll split their time between half at the airport, another half here at City Hall, in part responsible for these chambers.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I will support this now, but I think we need to have some very serious discussion at the budget about this. It was my understanding that when we created this department, that it would be a zero-sum game in terms of additional FTEs, and I know there are departments lined up around the block wanting new FTEs, and who we are adding to, to this brand-new department that we were told would not need any FTEs. Well, you know what, maybe this ought to wait till the budget discussion, I'm not sure, but I, I, I'm just, I'm concerned about doing this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask that we be more specific. When you say in, in these chambers, what does that mean to me as a councilperson? What will their job function be?
Mr. Tome.
Well, for starters, the end of the month, we have RFPs do requests for proposals on updating the technology in this room. So they're going to usher that process through and bring the information to you as a council so you can decide which way you want to proceed, and also somebody to staff the booth during Legal Finance, Public Works, the council meetings, and coordinate those efforts.
Alderman Johnson, sir, you still have the floor.
Okay, as I understand it, then, it's, we're staffing up, not just for a one-time thing of, of getting the technology here. We're staffing up so we can actually tape live or tape Public Works and Legal Finance as well as this, you talking video as well as audio? Is that what we're speaking of?
Mr. Tome.
There's, there's kind of two parts to the proposal. The first one is upgrading the technology in the room. The second part is, you know, that's the, the pipeline that captures it, and then the delivery mechanism, we're looking at a couple of different companies to actually, actually have live, video, and audio for, again, that's going to be a council decision, but for either the council meetings or Public Works, Legal Finance, the meetings you decide.
Alderman Johnson, you still have the floor, sir.
Again, we're talking about a permanent position, as I understand it.
Yes, sir.
So for the first item, to simply get the technology here, I'm not sure I would hire a permanent position. Secondly, I assume, and I do support the council having video capabilities on the internet and things like that for everybody to, I guess, see the minutes and see how the meetings are run. But I think we should have a pretty strong idea that we're going to move to that before we hire the person that we might use, if, if you understand what I'm saying. I assume the council, if I vote for this, my assumption is the council is, wants to move in that direction as well. Thank you.
Very good. Just for the point of clarification, I think it's important everybody knows this. During the 2008 budget process, we held FTEs to zero, absolutely none. There were no increases, that was by my directive to the department heads. Over the last three or four months, we've had discussions with all the department heads. We've, we've been talking about FTEs and the need to look at additional FTEs in the 2009 budget. The department heads all had the opportunity to make their case for any additional FTEs for the year 2008. All the department heads agreed there were basically three different positions, two being here. One is a backup to the payroll clerk, Mary. Currently, we have no backup for our payroll. If something happens to Mary, it's going to be very difficult to actually go through and actually process our payroll. I think that's very important. By freeing Mary up, she also has the ability to help with benefits, which actually frees up Kathy Druckrey, who can deal with employee issues. So that's that one position. The other position, which is a split position between the airport, the schools, and the city of Rapid City, the airport is going to fund half the FTE. They have additional IT needs out there, they're going to pick up half of the cost. The schools will pick up 40% of this person, and the cities will pick up the other 60. And in reference to Alderman Johnson, very good point, keep in mind, we do currently spend money through the mayor's budget every time we hold a meeting, when we actually have one of these IT folks come down, we actually pay them overtime. That would come out of the mayor's budget. This person would be that person to tape and also take care of all the audio/video equipment within this room. I hope that helped clarify the discussion. With that, let's go to Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little torn here. I think I can probably live with this, but I feel like I, I don't have a lot to get my arms around here, and I know from past experience that adding FTEs is inherently dangerous in terms of the fact that once you've added them, they're not going away. I appreciate the discussion of, of why these are justified, Mayor, and I guess I'll see what my colleagues think, but I don't know that it would hurt to, to take a couple of weeks to be able to get our arms around this as well. So I'll, I'll leave that to my colleagues.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your explanation, because when I first did my tour of City Hall two years ago, you know, I toured the HR department, and that was one of the, the concerns two years ago, that, that Mary had to pretty much schedule her vacation, or couldn't schedule her vacation around a lot of the, what's going on in the city. And I, I really believe we don't want to have our employees get burnt out in their position and not be able to take a vacation or, or do something that they need to do in their personal lives in order to perform proficiently at, at work. So I support the motion on the floor for, for the additional employees, and I, and that's a subject every year, Ron brings up that we need, Kroger does, that we need to look at our, our staffing and take care of our employees in the city. So I, I thank Tom for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said, at Legal and Finance, I too had some concerns about adding FTEs, not during the budget cycle, but I, I do support the motion on the floor because the department heads got together and decided which of these were most critical at this time. I just stressed to the mayor and to Kevin at Legal and Finance, and I'll do it again tonight, that this is a painful process, but this process should take place during the budget cycle, and I understand that this, this is critical at this point. I, I do have a question for you, Kevin, but I, I want to make a point prior to that. The mayor said that we didn't add FTEs this last budget cycle that he proposed, that's correct, but there were FTEs added. I just want to make that clarification. The city council then added 1.5 FTEs, I believe, at, at the library, at General Beetle, the new community center, as well as two at the, the RTAs. So there were new FTEs added this cycle, but not coming from the mayor, but the council did changes with that. Kevin, my question for you, where is the funding for these FTEs coming from?
Well, in '08, it's going to come out of our existing budgets. For, in the HR side of it, we had a vehicle slated that we were going to buy for a replacement. We're going to hold off on that purchase. We'll use that money to fund the position in '08. And then on the IT side, again, as the mayor stated, the airport's picking up half of the cost, the other half is split 60-40 between the schools and the cities. So we've got to find 60% of the half in the IT budget, and we're prepared to do that.
Just a final comment, not being critical about what was done, but again, I would just say collectively, let's try to figure out a way to put these conversations during the budget cycle, and I think the mayor would agree with that. And I support the motion on the floor, and I hope that the rest of the council members will as well.
Thank you. Let's go to, let's see, I'm going to go to Alderman Tom Johnson, and then, oh, you had spoken? Okay, I'm doing this reverse. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. I don't, well, you've both spoken. We'll go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would note that the resolution doesn't include the, the pay grade or additional information regarding the job descriptions. Will, will that come back?
Kevin?
The HR clerk is a, let's find it here, is a grade 12, step A, and the IT is a grade 17, step A.
So this is, Mayor, so this has already been to the committee to be rated, and it's gone through that process in terms of an assigned pay grade?
Mr. Tome.
They're existing positions now, so we didn't create a new position.
Okay. Is it okay if we include the pay grades in the, in the published resolution? I think that's a reasonable, reasonable request, that that's something that we typically do when we create an FTE and establish new staffing.
Pay, pay grade, I think that would probably be, well, that's already established, but I think, yes, that, basically, what the policy is, is of course, any to, the, I think I'll do this, the city council, anytime anything, anybody comes in above a step D, that does take city council approval. Anything below a step D, that is at the discretion, well, I can tell you, it's actually at the discretion of the department heads, but I've made it my policy, anything above a step B has to be cleared through the, through the mayor's office. So I'm not sure I...
If I could clarify my intent, Mayor?
Yeah, please do.
My intent is, is to have, that this would say, to authorize an increase of two, or, I'm sorry, that you could just do it in the first paragraph, you know, that you need two additional positions, and one is a pay grade 12, and one is a pay grade 17, but I, I think it's critical that the pay grades be included in the published, published resolution.
Okay. Is that in the form of a motion? Or would you like...
Should I offer a substitu, you recommend a substitute motion, or just a motion to amend to include the pay grades?
Let's ask Jason Green, our city attorney, what his recommendation is. Jason, have you been following this conversation?
Yes. Typically, the council does not include that information in resolutions to authorize FTEs. You typically include the pay grades when you authorize the positions themselves. So if you are authorizing a payroll clerk, that result, the, the pay grade is already established. If you're authorizing an IT person, that's already established. And I think it's clear what the two FTEs are for, maybe, maybe that's what you need to add, is just that you're authorizing a payroll clerk and an IT support person, and maybe Kevin has the actual titles.
Mr. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. If that could just be noted in the minutes relating to the resolution, I think that, that covers it.
Okay. Very good. You bet. Let's go to, I'm going to go to Karen, Karen Guderson Olson, who has not spoken, and we'll come back to Alderman Johnson.
I would just be in support of the motion on the floor, the amendment.
There is, there's, okay, the original, the original motion? Okay, very good. Thank you. Alderman Tom Johnson. Alderman Tom Johnson.
Just a comment regarding doing this within your own budget this year. I'm not sure I'm wholly comforted by the fact you're going to put, not buy a vehicle this year, assuming you're going to buy it next year. So I assume that either way you do it, it's going to come out of reserves, at least in my opinion, because that vehicle will be purchased eight months later. So I'm not certain there's a real savings. To me, it just adds to the budget. So when you told me that, I just, I want to recognize at least that for the council, that I think you're just saving a purchase for eight months.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We are on to item number fifty-five, please.
Fifty-five is to refer Human Relations Commission ordinance to a committee to be appointed by the mayor consisting of an attorney from the city attorney's office, a representative from the city council, and representatives from the community to review the current ordinance and draft a new ordinance and bring it back to the Legal and Finance Committee meeting, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. We, let's see, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just ask when the plan is to bring forward the appointments, that's just my only question at this time.
Okay. We should be able to bring those appointments back by the next Legal and Finance Committee. You should see it on the city council agenda in two weeks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Karen Olsen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regard to this, it was discussed at Legal and Finance, that it was important if individual council members had strong, had opinions about folks or types of positions that should be appointed, they were urged to bring those forward and that they would be considered in the same way that anything that would come from your office as well.
Very good. Thank you. Further discussion. Alderman Deb Hatcock.
I'd like to thank Jason Green and the people that came to our committee on this issue, and Malcolm Chapman, who also coordinated in order to get a committee to review this with Jason. I appreciate all the members involved in this. It was a very positive solution, so I appreciate all the people that were involved in the Human Relations Committee.
Further discussion. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? And the motion for approval of this would refer the Human Relations Commission ordinance to a committee to be appointed by the mayor. And it does state consisting of a city attorney from the city attorney's office, representative from the city council, and representatives from the community to review the current ordinance and draft a new ordinance and bring it back to the Legal and Finance Committee meeting. Okay? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to the non-consent items, items seventy-four through ninety-seven. The chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period. We have a motion and a second to open the public comment period. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Seeing no speaker request forms for items seventy-four through ninety-seven. Chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period. We have a motion and a second to close the public comment period on items seventy-four through ninety-seven. Any further discussion? Seeing none, whoops, okay. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the non-consent items, and we will go to item number seventy-four, please.
Seventy-four is the first reading in ordinance of number fifty-three seventy-nine, in ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Kristin Loaf for Tracy Klett for a rezoning from general commercial district to medium-density residential district located at forty-two sixteen Canyon Lake Drive, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Karen Olsen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, there's no attachment to this, but it would be important for me to know that this is compatible with a future land use plan.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of first reading. Seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seventy-five, please.
Seventy-five is the first reading in ordinance number fifty-three eighty, in ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Bosch Engineering for Stony Creek Development for a rezoning from low-density residential district to office commercial district located south of Catron Boulevard between Bent Drive and Nugget Gulch Road. And I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Deb?
Number seventy-six is the first reading of ordinance number fifty-three eighty-one, in ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for a rezoning from office commercial district to general commercial district located east of Elkvale Road and west of De Geese Drive and south of Bernice Street. And I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seventy-seven, please.
Seventy-seven is the first reading of ordinance number fifty-three eighty-two, in ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for a rezoning from general agricultural district to public district located southwest of intersection of Big Sky Drive and De Geese Drive and east of Elkvale Road. And I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-eight, please.
Seventy-eight is the first reading of ordinance number fifty-three eighty-three, in ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for a rezoning from low-density residential district to public district located southwest of intersection of Big Sky Drive and De Geese Drive and east of Elkvale Road. And I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item seventy-nine, please.
Seventy-nine is the first reading of ordinance number fifty-three eighty-four, in ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for a rezoning from low-density residential district to office commercial district located east of northern terminus of Jolly Lane and west of Sweetfire Street. Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item eighty, please.
Number eighty is the first reading of ordinance number fifty-three eighty-five, in ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for a rezoning from general agricultural district to office commercial district located southwest of the intersection of Big Sky Drive and De Geese Drive and east of Elkvale Road. Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item eighty-one, please.
Eighty-one is the first reading of ordinance number fifty-three eighty-six, in ordinance amending section seventy point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for a rezoning from general agricultural district to low-density residential district located southwest of intersection of Big Sky Drive and De Geese Drive and east of Elkvale Road. And I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eighty-two, please.
Eighty-two is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-three seventy-three, repealing chapter fifteen point twenty-six of the Rapid City Municipal Code in its entirety and adopting a new chapter, fifteen point two-six of the Rapid City Municipal Code entitled Mechanic Code. And I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Eighty-three, please.
Eighty-three is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-three seventy-four, repealing chapter fifteen point two-two of the Rapid City Municipal Code in its entirety and adopting a new chapter of fifteen point two-two of the Rapid City Municipal Code entitled International Fuel Gas Code. And I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Eighty-four, please.
Eighty-four is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-three seventy-six to require notification of the police department prior to moving a building by adding section five point four four point zero seven zero to the chapter five point four four of the Rapid City Municipal Code. And I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to Legal and Finance Committee items. Item number eighty-five, please.
Eighty-five is a request by Spurlet Consulting for Ronald Shape Innovative Creations LLC to consider an application for a creation of tax increment district located at the eastern terminus of Homestead Street. And I move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we have a brief presentation from staff on this?
I think they're ready. Karen Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This tax increment district, there are in effect two funding sources for this. The first one is for the developer, and he is planning to have some oversizing costs for the drainage storm sewer and grading for a detention cell in that area. And he's also putting in the seventy-five-foot extension of Homestead Street for the Rapid City Public School District. So he's putting up the money for those two items. The third item is for a sixteen-inch water line within Homestead Street. This is a water line that will not serve the Homestead subdivision, but will extend the water service closer to the airport. So it's something that the city is doing, and that's our part of the district costs. There is some commercial development or commercial zoning, excuse me, in that area, so this will be an economic development TIF, so that the school district share of the property taxes will not have to be re-leaved within the city. We use the interest rate of nine percent for the developer and six percent for the city when we calculated the project plan, but at the last council meeting, you folks changed the interest rate that will actually be used, and that will be that benchmark interest language that was approved at the last meeting. So that will be the actual language in the developers' agreement. But to put the project plan together, we did use the nine percent, six percent. The TIF committee approved the creation and the project plan, and the planning commission also approved the creation of tax increment number sixty-eight, which is what this number would be. If you have any specific questions, I'll try to answer them.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several questions. First is, Karen, if you could clarify the interest rate, it's going to be at the new requirement, which is the lower, the lower rate.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Correct. The actual language was that, that benchmark interest rate that we, that you passed at the last meeting, which talked about the construction phase having a nine percent, not greater than nine percent. And then once the, the funding is available to pay off that TIF and to, over the years, then it's reduced down to a three percent over the published ten-year U.S. Treasury rate, not to exceed nine percent. And that was the language that was approved at the last council meeting, and that will be part of the developers' agreement when they put that together, that language will be put in there. But when we did the project plan, without knowing what those interest rates are, it's hard to calculate that, so we just use a nine percent interest rate.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Two other questions. First of all, and I will keep, I believe that I am keeping to the, to the motion, the spirit of the discussion when I asked this, but the, do we know who the partners are in Innovative Creations? I haven't heard of that, of that one.
And I-
Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't give you that data right off the top of my head, but I believe that developer and the, those folks who are in the audience, if you want to address that question to them.
And just before I ask the question, I'd like to state why I'm asking the question, and it's not to single out this applicant, because I'm going to ask the same question on item one twenty-eight, but there is a new rule that will, that is being proposed by the TIF review committee that was passed unanimously by that committee for later review by the council to require the disclosure of all the partners in LLCs or corporations that apply for TIFs. And so in the spirit of that, I was hoping that, and asking that the developer release the names of the individuals that are partners in this LLC.
Karen?
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that they did provide that information when this actually went to the TIF committee, which was back in May and June of last year. And I did, I do believe they had that provided, but I don't have it right here at the podium.
I didn't see it in the linked information, so if I could have that, please, that would be great.
Sir, are you- Karen?
I've just been informed that Ron Shape is the only person that is in that entity. So that is his entity that-
Then one last question, Mayor, and that is-
Please.
Is the, the city attorney's opinion on this, on this TIF?
Jason Green, city attorney.
I believe I sent an email to the council, but if you didn't receive it, I think you would recognize what the opinion was if you've seen any of my others.
Why don't, instead of making Alderman Quaker ask, I think, if you go to, please go ahead and state it for the record.
The, my opinion is that it does not meet the statutory criteria for blight.
Very good. Thank you. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
What percentage of the land is commercial?
There are approximately, I'm trying to think, a hundred and five acres, and of that, I'm guessing twenty-five, maybe. That's just a guess.
Okay. Anything else, Alderman Quaker? If not, further discussion. The motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? No. Motion passes with one no from Alderman Quaker. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number eighty-six.
Eighty-six is a request by Spurlet Consulting for Ronald Shape Innovative Creations LLC to consider an application for a project plan for tax increment district Homestead located at the eastern terminus of Homestead Street, and I move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Whoops, there we got one. Alderman Karen Olsen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a somewhat of a generic comment about this. One of the things that's been funded in this is, my understanding is this is a regional retention facility, and there's not much discussion about the ongoing maintenance that occurs with these regional drainage facilities, and this, this one is regional, it's not on a single prop. And so I just think in the future, we need to begin, become more mindful of the fact
that these large facilities do have ongoing costs to the city, or, or at least the community's expectation is that they be maintained in a suitable fashion, which includes regular maintenance and, in order to control weeds and other kinds of, and I, so I just hope that in the future, we continue to discuss how this maintenance occurs. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Let's also go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I just have a couple of concerns. I think this is a good project plan. I guess I'm just looking at priority here in the airport water line. I know this is a piece to that, and that's one reason why I'm agreeing with this, plus the forty-inch line to, forty-eight inch line to a thirty-six inch line, to correct some of the issues that were done before on this line, but I guess, I would hope that we had have a plan besides tax increment financing to get to the airport for the funding source on this issue, because if we think we're going to tax increment finance the whole way through, I don't hopefully think that's a good alternative. And also to look at the Rapid Valley Sanitary District, I understand there's some issues with water there, and also annexation to get where we're needed to go. So when we're making these decisions, we need to figure out what the whole picture is, and I would hope, Robert Ellis, if you have any kind of information on that, I know this is one piece to the puzzle, but I guess in order for me to keep thinking this is a good thing to do and do it in tacky, tax increment financing and funding sources from the city and from developers as well, I'd like to know what the plan is and how to get there for the water system that's going to the airport.
Deb, is that a question for tonight, or is that something you want to talk about in the future?
I think it's something we should see now, only for the fact that it's going to make, I think the council should know where we're going and how we're going to pay for it, and if this is one piece, if we can't do the next pieces, I'm trying to figure out why we do this piece. Does that make sense?
Very well. You, you hit the point I was trying to lead you to, and that is how it's germane to the question.
Thank you, Mayor Hanks.
With that, Mr. Ellis.
As far as the water to the airport issue is concerned, this is one of the first major pieces. If we miss this opportunity, the street goes in, and at some point in the future, we'd have to tear out that street and lay in a water line. This is the perfect time to put it in. It's going to be the cheapest time to do it, and the, the TIF allows the enterprise fund to recapture that cost back. So we will get there. It will take additional costs, but it, it will happen before too long, because the need for the water at the airport is there.
And does, okay, ask me another...
Deb, you have the floor, ma'am.
And does that low level or that high level that we're putting in, does that water source, is that how we are connecting this line to the airport?
Yes, it is.
Robert.
Okay.
Deb, anything else?
No.
Again, I'm going to apologize, I think I just erased Alderman Tom Johnson's light, so I'm going to go to Alderman Tom Johnson, and we'll be going to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach. Alderman Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it, it bears some fruit in repeating what this TIF actually does, because sometimes we have people make comments on really what TIFs are being used for. In this tax increment district, eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand and change will be for oversizing costs. These are costs that the community normally pays, not the developer, the community, number one. Number two, it pays for the sixteen inch water main, which does not benefit the property order, however, benefits the city of Rapid City and would have to be paid for otherwise. In my opinion, it makes sense for us to fund some of these projects out of tax increment districts. The development pays for development in this area. If we did not fund it from a tax increment district, we would have to fund it either out of twenty-twelve capital improvements, general fund, or in the case of water, we'd have to go right to the water rates and, and raise water rates to pay for additional infrastructure. We already know we need a lot of improvements in our water system in the next probably five years, based upon jacks and strings being shut down. So it's important, again, to say that these are community costs. The costs that are normally have to be paid by the community are being paid through the increased value by the developer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I have a question for Robert Ellis, because I don't think I got a clear answer to Alderman Hadcock's question on what was our plan for this water main, once we, are we building a water main to nowhere, or are we going to tip this thing all the way to the, to the, to the airport or to the low-level reserve?
Mr. Ellis.
We've, we've been visiting with some of the other developers out there in that neighborhood who are looking, and they need water to make their developments work as well, and so we're all trying to work together to find out what's the best solution to get water for these developments and also get water out to the airport. So we have been actively visiting with some of those people. There's also a small water district out in that area that has water that doesn't meet the E and R standards, the, the achievement that we received tonight. They weren't able to get to similar achievement. So they have needs for water, too. So we're just trying to partner and find a way, how do we financially all come together and fulfill the needs of all the interested parties out there? So it will get, it will get built before too long. I mean, the airport has a real need for water out there, and like I said, this is step one, and just continuing, continuing that transmission main out to the airport is a goal of the Public Works Department.
Alderman Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
So do we have a plan to pay for that?
Mr. Ellis.
We do not have a formal project identified in the CIP to extend a water main all the way out there. It would be millions of dollars to do that, and so it is not in our plan right now, and we're trying to take advantage of these opportunities as they come before us.
Alderman Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Maybe I misunderstood, but my, my understanding is, you mentioned that this water line, I mean, there's a sanitary and water district in this area now, they will, this development will not be tapping this water main at all. So is there other developments that are on slate that we don't know about that are going to tap into this water main before it gets to the airport?
Mr. Ellis.
Yeah, the nature, the nature of the development before you concerned with this TIF, they do not need city water. They are on the northern hemisphere of the Rapid Valley Sanitary District, so they don't need this city water line. However, our water line is just barely passing through this portion of, of the district. Rather than go up and around the district, we wanted to go right through it, just to save on cost. So this development is just on the fringes of the district.
Mr. Wyffenbach, and I might, let's hear, let's go to Vicki Fisher. I had to wake you guys up. The, the question is, and, and I'm going to, I think I'm going to get to what Alderman Wyffenbach was asking, the additional developments that are being proposed east of this location, are there any proposed housing developments that could benefit from the extension of this water main? I, I think I know the answer, but I think Vicki probably is a little bit more of an expert than I am.
Mr. Mayor, there's a lot of undeveloped land that we have east of here. If we have, we do not have any current plans in, but as we see the developers in that area come in and continue to talk with us, we anticipate that in time, there will be additional development east of here. More importantly, though, we do have development that's being proposed right now, known as Homestead Plaza, that's directly west of this, and so we see this as an area of our community that's continuing to grow at a very fast rate.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wyffenbach, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that someone answered my question, but I want to make a comment about this tax district, because I have a tendency not to support these test, tax districts, and this one I, I spent a lot of time on, since Legal and Finance Committee viewing the area out there, and what's happening out there is the regional drainage drains right into this, this fellow's property. There's absolutely no way that, that, that property can develop, be developed without this TIF, and that's why I'm going to support it, and I think that I'm hoping in the future that, it seems like we have a tendency to, are moving to an area where we're starting to attack these problems up front with the drainage issues that, that we have in that area, the drainage issues we have on some or other areas of our town, our, in Rapid City, and that's one of the reasons I support it, because after talking to the engineers on the staff on this project, what they're going to, what they're going to do is, is they're going to solve a lot of problems that, that Rapid Valley has right now, and as we move forward and we look at annexation and, and, and things that are going to bring these, these problems more into our city, and I believe this area is already going to be annexed, but if this doesn't get fixed, we're going to have major problems out there that we're going to fe, face in the future. The drainage out there is atrocious, to say the least, with, and it all happens to drain on this one fellow's piece of parcel out there in Rapid Valley, and then overflows into, into places where there is already houses built, and we, and we haven't been handling rain for seven, eight, maybe nine years now, and once that, once we do get rains, I think those people in those areas are going to fill the brunt of this if we don't build these, these detention cells and properly flow this water properly, so I would like, you know, that's the reason I'm, I'm supporting this tax district, because there's absolutely no way that development will happen without this task, tax district. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, the city's in a, in a tough spot here, certainly the issues of drainage needs to be addressed in this area, but it bothers me that we have tens of millions of dollars of existing drainage and stormwater issues in Rapid City that, that need to be addressed, and here we are taking on more, you know, we're, we are now building new detention facilities without taking the operation and maintenance costs into account, and that bothers me that when we, when we put in projects, regardless of how they're funded, we don't take into how we're going to maintain them in, in, in the future, and that, it concerns me that we do business that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven is a resolution establishing a policy to reimburse the owners of a private sewer and water line serving multiple residents for the cost of the repairing or replacing such lines, and I move to Robert Ellis.
Okay, let's go to Robert Ellis.
I have a short presentation that was presented at the Legal and Finance Committee. The Legal and Finance asked that I bring this forward to the full city council for a little discussion.
Mr. Ellis, one quick thing, I'm, I'm not going to, if we could just have a motion for discussion, I think we went through this exercise last week, so if we could just have a, a, a motion to do whatever, so we can discuss it.
Do approve.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval for discussion. Thank you, everyone. Now, Mr. Ellis, thank you.
With that, I'll go directly into my presentation. I'll keep it as brief as I can. The item at hand, water and sewer lines, private water and sewer lines commonly referred to as common service lines. Right now, the city has a current policy referred to as the forty-sixty match, where the city pays forty percent, a maximum of forty percent, to repair these types of situations whereby you've got multiple private properties served by a private service line that have a non-conforming water sewer line in front of their house. In other words, they don't have an ability to hook up directly to a city water and sewer line. The forty-sixty match was an attempt to try to relieve that problem, and the city would pay forty percent of the cost to re, to correct it with a max of four thousand dollars per property, and the property owners would pay sixty percent, plus anything over the forty, four thousand dollars per property owner. So the number of private lines that we have out there, for water, we have about five-hundred-and-eighty documented cases, and for sewer, we have seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine identified properties. And just to give you a little bit of a prelude as to where these are found and how old they are, we've got four really concentrated areas, the North Rapid section of town, which is about fifty-five years old, and looking back at annexation records, that's the general age of that neighborhood. We've got Central Rapid, which is the oldest at about eighty years. You've got the Canyon Lake area, sixty years old on average, and the West Chicago area, which is also sixty years old. So when you take a look at those four neighborhoods, where a majority of these issues are, a more, majority of these property owners are located, you'll find that the average age is about sixty-three years old. And to give you a graphical representation of where these are at, each red dot here indicates a private sewer line that's non-conforming. So you can see North Rapid on the north, Central Rapid in the middle, you've got the Canyon Lake area, and also the West Chicago area. And there are a few outside of those boundaries, but for the most part, they're, they're, they're held to those four areas. As you move beyond the limits of this exhibit, you really won't see very many at all in the southern part of town, the western, or farther east. Now, taking a look at the water, it's pretty identical to the sewer locations. Again, you've got the North Rapid, Central Rapid, West Chicago, and the Canyon Lake area, they're identified there by blue dots. So the typical scenario that we see, this is a, this situation doesn't exist, this is merely a demonstration of what we come across quite frequently out in the field, but if you could imagine, the red line is the sewer that is found in the street, out in the center of the street, and for whatever reason, every once in a while, you'll find a block that didn't have a sewer line put in, and so that you can see those property owners along that block have had to run their private service lines, which are identified in green, any which way they can to find the nearest city-owned sewer main. So in many cases, you might find, some are going, well, they're going to the closest sewer they can find, and they might go south, north, they might go across their neighbor's property, they might actually tie into their neighbor's service line. You find all kinds of, of odd things out there as people have tried to hook up to the nearest sewer line. Now, I just did want to point out on, on the Franklin Avenue sewer that we encountered this winter, we did the project, declared an emergency to fix, that was kind of a, an oddball. It's not normally how things happen, where you've got multiple service lines going out to the alleyway where they were hooked on to what we called a private sewer, private, private service sewer line. That's, that's fairly odd that they actually all hook up to the same line. Usually they're kind of going all different directions here to find a sewer line. So what are the issues with these types of situations? Well, the first and biggest is there's little or no maintenance on those lines, because they are privately owned and maintained. And what does that cause? Well, obviously sewer backups into homes. You oftentimes have received phone calls from people who have backed up sewer, want to figure out how to get it fixed, and then that's usually when they figure out that it's a private service line. So there's a health and safety issue there. Also, from the city's standpoint, we've got inflow and infiltration into these pipes. These pipes are old. You can see by the age of some of those neighborhoods, they're reaching the end of their useful lives, and with little or no maintenance, you've got pipes that either have joints that are leaking, you've got tree roots that have gone into the pipe, or you've just got corroded pipes that have holes in them, and so that causes groundwater when we have saturated conditions getting into the sewer line, it's taking up capacity in our sewer lines, and then we're also treating groundwater unnecessarily down at our water treatment plant, so there's a cost to that as well. And then we have some of the nuisance problems where we've got sewage discharging directly into the ground. We've seen sewer running down gutter lines before. You know, you've got a serious health and safety issue there as well, as well as the potential to contaminate the groundwater. Some of the other issues, when you have a problem like this, it's hard to get neighborhood consensus to fix the problem, because there's a cost to it. And if I'm not getting sewer backed up in my home, what's my incentive to spend four, five, ten thousand dollars to help out with the problem that really isn't a problem to me, but it may be to the guy four or five houses downstream from me? So getting that neighborhood consensus where everybody chips in money to fix the problem is difficult. Staff time, I have a, a person on my staff that I would estimate spends a third of their time working on problems like these, trying to solve them, and with the current program that we have, in all honesty, very few projects ever get done. We do a lot of investigation, we do a lot of estimates, we sit down with the public, we sit down with the neighborhood, and when it comes time to talk about who pays what, that's where the project usually unravels, and we're back to square one until a new set of property owners move into the house, and then we sit down with them again. So it takes a, it takes an extraordinary amount of time, and also your time. I mean, the city council has been enveloped into this problem several times since I've been here in my short year. I know that we've spent a lot of time up here on this dais talking about this issue, and I'm sure you've spent a lot of your own private time as well. And then there's also the comment that, well, the city allowed this to happen, so the city should step in and fix it. So that's it, that's another comment we hear very often. And the last issue we have is really there's no ownership, or there's unknown ownership of these lines. So without that ownership, it's hard to get these problems fixed. Some of the options that we, we've taken a closer look at, of course, we've got our existing program, the forty-sixty match. There's also another idea of using a graduated scale by the age of the pipe, or the age the pipe was installed, and trying to come up with a reasonable expectation of what each participant should pay for that. Another program that we've, we've taken a look at, closer look at, is a seventy-thirty match program, very similar to the forty-six, forty-sixty match, but it actually has the city paying seventy percent and homeowner paying thirty percent. And I'll go into these into a little bit more detail here in, in just a minute. And then, I've said this before, there's, there's a hundred different ways you can address this problem. It really comes down to how much money you're willing to pay for it, but by all means, these aren't the only ways you can do it, there are several different ways it can be done. So taking a closer look at the forty-sixty match, talked a little bit about this, it's our existing program, the way it works is, once a, once a neighborhood is ready to tackle the issue, they'll submit a petition to the city. We like to see as many positive signatures on that as we can, it just helps give a little bit of momentum to the project, but they do have to petition us, because it is an assessment. There still is that forty percent that they have to pay, the council, your body has to pass a resolution forcing them to pay that, and so that's where the petition comes into play. Again, the city pays forty percent, we have a max at four thousand dollars per property owner that, that we limit on that forty percent, and then the remainder of those costs are split by all the benefiting parties, so all the people that benefit by having that sewer line in place. Some of the pros to that, it, it is an incentive to take care of the issue, so that's definitely a positive, and another thing is, these projects are done privately. They may petition the city to pay for our forty percent, but it's still up to the profit, to up to the property owners to hire a contractor to do a design, and they actually pay the contractor directly. Once the project's finished, they submit their bills to us, and we pay the forty percent. Now, what we do with that sixty percent that they've paid is, as other benefiting parties hook up to it, and they're not required to hook up to it right away, but as their sewer lines fail, that sewer line would now be in front of their house, they would come to the city, try to connect to it, we would recover that cost back, and we would pay the original property owner who put in that water line. We manage the connection fee, and this is the connection fee that the city does when we do new developing areas. The only difference here, this is a developed area, so as you hook up, you pay your fee. Some of the cons are, we have a lot of petitions that come in and very few projects that actually go out the door. Like I said, when it comes down to actually spending money, it's, it's still thousands of dollars for some of these property owners, and it's hard for them to afford those types of projects. So very few projects actually get done every year, and because of that, there's a lack of support. Because of that expense, there's a lack of support neighborhood-wide to actually take care of the issue. And another con is the four thousand dollar limit prohibits some of these projects from moving forward. Now, the other option that was talked about, and it's in the resolution, I believe, that's linked on the agenda, is the graduated scale by age. Now, how this would work is, the older the line is, the more the city would pay. If it's over four years old, the city would pay fifty percent. Fifty years old, sixty percent, all the way down to ninety years old, and would pay a hundred percent. Now, a little bit of the philosophy behind that is, as a utility customer, when you pay in your bill for your sewer every month, a portion of that is going towards the treatment costs that we have down in our water reclamation plant. Another portion of your bill is for the trunk sewers that carry it from your house all the way down to the plant, and then the third portion of that is, the frontage sewer that you have in front of your house typically has a life, and over that life of you sending in your bill every year, you should pay for the replacement of that sewer in front of in front of your house. So this, this program here takes a little bit of an advantage of that fact. You've been paying in sewer for so many years, then you should have paid so much towards the replacement of your sewer. And I got a little bit ahead of myself here, but this explains it. The older the house is, the more you've paid in. So if a pipe has a life of seventy-five to eighty-five years, in theory, over that time, you should have paid for your frontage sewer to be replaced. And so the pros of this graduated scale by age is, there's more incentive for people to update their pipes because these areas where they're failing are older. So there would be more, there would be more city participation in that pipe being replaced. And then again, another pro is the city could, the city could manage the private connection fee like we do with the forty-sixty program. Now, some of the cons of this program would be, the question, well, what year was my house built? What year was it plotted? What year was it purchased? And trying to identify how much of a reimbursement you get from the city. The questions you might get, well, my neighbor, his house was built nineteen sixty-one. My house is built nineteen fifty-eight. I'm paying less than my neighbor. And, and just a little bit of, a little bit of that discussion there. Connection fees can be difficult to administer because as time goes on, somebody's got to track those. You've got to do an adjustment. Ten years down the road, somebody wants to connect, you've got to do that calculation. Seventy-thirty match program, similar to the forty-sixty, graduated scale by age. When we take a look at those four areas of town that we discussed earlier, the average age was sixty-three years old. It just so happens, when you compare it to, to the graduated scale, over sixty years old would pay seventy percent. So it makes sense when you compare that to the other program. If the average age is sixty-three, which it is, it would match with that seventy percent. So that's where that seventy-thirty came from. The pros, comparable to eight, to the age scale option, there's incentive to update the lines. So we'll actually start doing more projects out there. The city can manage the connection fee, simple rules to understand and apply. The cons are, some might say the city pays more, and it's a private issue, we shouldn't pay any. Be that as it may. I think it's good that we try to fix some of these lines because they're, they'll continue to be a problem for the council and for staff for years to come if we don't have a, a program that tries to take care of these more. Our recommendations, the staff recommendation, is increase the incentive to fix the line. However you do that, I think the more the city pays, the better it will be. I would steer away from maybe a hundred percent reimbursement by the city. But any, anything more that we can do over above the forty-sixty, I think would be a good step. There was discussion about allowing any number of affected customers. Maybe the limit should be, you have to have two people that this benefits, two or more people, rather than just one single property owner. That's something that need to be taken into consideration. Make it an easy connection fee to administer. Those are already difficult. So if we get this too complicated, it's hard to actually keep those records straight. I would recommend initiating a two to three hundred thousand dollar a year line item in the budget to address these so that you just do the number of projects your budget can afford. If you get more petitions than you have budget, then they just carry forward to the next year and you try to tackle it in the next budget cycle. The SAB twenty-eight option would still be available for private property owners to get a low interest loan from the city. That would help them absorb that cost and spread it out over several years. I would stick with requiring a petition. Petition would help us prioritize which projects to do. And we would come up with some type of a matrix where you get a, you get a point system so we could help prioritize. Obviously, things like the number of backups that have been experienced would bring you up in the prioritization, the number of people that have signed the petition, the number of benefiting properties, or maybe how long you've been in the petition cycle. So, and then also, one last thing, I think that we need to limit this to anybody before a certain year, say nineteen ninety, or somewhere in there, just because I think that this is a problem that was essentially started prior to nineteen seventy. I think staff has done a good job trying to eliminate these from happening in the future. But I think you need to have some type of a cutoff there. So with that, sorry I took so long. I'll try to answer any questions.
Very good. Discussion, we have a number of lights. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I'd like to thank you and your staff, Robert, for finding the solution on this issue. You have addressed many of the issues that the council had with this, private sewer lines and water lines. I think you did a great job. I appreciate it because infrastructure, and old infrastructure is a issue in my ward, and I think many of our wards. So again, I really appreciated it, the things that you have done. You have, you have taken all the issues in account that we have put forth as this council. I also thank the council for giving Robert the opportunity to do this one more time and bring this forth because we have went through this many times. Saying that, and said that, if I could direct the staff in a motion to direct the staff to prepare the seventy-thirty ordinance, and then bring that back to the legal and finance for, for the refinement.
Second. Okay, we have a substitute motion in a second to direct staff to draft the seventy-thirty policy and bring it back to legal and finance, as an ordinance. Okay, as an ordinance, very good. Discussion on that motion, please. Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, just from the outset, have to say, I don't know that I could possibly be more glowing in my appreciation of the report we were just done, were just given, and the work that obviously went into it. This is exactly what, for almost four years on the council now, I've continually wanted to see more of from staff. And that is recognizing that the council wants to do something, but also recognizing that we're kind of hamming it up by trying to figure it out from the dais, and actually stepping back and bringing forward a proposal that makes sense for everybody involved. And I just, I can't say how glowing I am about that. This is just, I'm tickled. I thank all involved. I have a feeling Mayor Hanks had some work involved in this as well. So thank everybody who is involved. Really, I just, I've never been so happy with a report that's come back and all that detail that we probably didn't even need. But This has been my baby for all four years that I've been on the council. And I've been trying to get the city to step up to the plate and accept responsibility for, for what is partly our problem. And I'm really glad we have. If I had it to do myself, I would say we should be reimbursing one hundred percent. But we can't afford to do that. This is a great step. One point, if it didn't come across, is that these people have been ratepayers too for, as long as they've owned the house, and as long as the people before them have owned the houses. And I've been told that ten to fifteen dollars per month of their utility bill goes for sewer re- replacement issues. And here we are, telling them they don't get the same replacement that other ratepayers would have gotten over the same period of time. So I'm not going to belabor the subject. I just want to thank everybody involved. This is a great example of staff being responsive and smart and not being difficult. And I thank them from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask, ask the motion maker a question. Deb, is it your intent that this would be, that nineteen, the year nineteen seventy would be hardwired into this ordinance? That it's, that's my understanding, and I support that if that's your intent. But
Alderman Hadcock, do you understand the question you wish to answer?
At this point, I think we should let the Public Works, Robert Ellis, decide if we're putting the nineteen seventy in there. I think it's just kind of a draft, so we're going through that right now, Sam. So I think he can bring that forth. And if that's one of your concerns, he can put that in the draft and we can bring that forth. But I guess I'm relying on Robert Ellis at this point, since his direction so far has been a positive direction. So
Okay. Alderman, Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, and as I understand, the direction is essentially, you know, a hardwired seventy-thirty split. And I, I think that, you know, there was two years that were thrown out. One was nineteen ninety, and one was nineteen seventy. And I, I would, my understanding is, I think nineteen seventy would be the better, the better year. And we can bring that back for further discussion. But it is my understanding that there will be a year hardwired into the ordinance rather than to, say, thirty-five, or forty, or fifty years old.
Cool.
Very good. Anything else? Now, let's go on to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I appreciate Mr. Ellis's work on this as well. The part that's been helpful to me, and I have, Mr. Okrepke and I have long been concerned about trying to define the private lines. And I think Mr. Ellis has made an effort to make people understand. And I, I guess I would reiterate, the part that you've been paying for is the section of the line that's in front of your house, not this long private line. And I think this discussion has led, led us to this better understanding of what private lines are. And I think that's very helpful. I also recognize, Mr. Ellis brought forward some, some facts that did sway my opinion in terms of assisting with this program. The idea that we are in fact, maybe, that we are in fact caring for treated water because, you know, with our, in our water treatment plant because of seepage into these lines, which, and as well as some of the safety issues, positioned me to feel comfortable about supporting this action. So I would, I'm in support of the motion. My understanding is, I would certainly give the Public Works Department some option about, the, the number I'm hearing for the existing customers would be nineteen ninety and before. But it sounds as though we have, are going to have some opportunity to look at this again. So I'm in support of the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
I would rather shore up the draft ordinance a little bit more. I appreciate the work that's here. I think that the argument given by Robert on the seventy-thirty strongly supports probably the argument on the graduated. And it does make some sense. Obviously, not a lot of these are in Ward One. And I support what goes on to the community. I believe that nineteen seventy is the appropriate year. But I also believe you ought to have three or more homes on it. If it's simply a private line getting to your home like that, one line should not even be considered. And the staff did tell us before that they tracked this fairly close, fairly close from nineteen seventy on. So there should be no secret whether you had a private line or a public line prior to that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move an amendment that we include three or more homes in nineteen seventy in the language.
Okay, do we have a second to the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. We have a motion in a second to amend, and that is to add the additional language of nineteen seventy as the date, and also no fewer than three lines. Is that correct, Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Discussion, we're gonna stick strictly to the amendment. So if you wish to talk to the amendment, please make sure you have your light on. If not, if your discussion is about the main motion, please wait until we basically dispose or approve of the amendment. So
[inaudible]
No, then you go back to the original motion. We are, the vote will be strictly on the amendment. And then depending on if the amendment passes or fails, we're back to the original motion. Okay? With that, Alderman Ron Wyffenbach. Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bob Hurlbut. There again, on the motion to amend, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Did I mention that I'm very happy with this proposal that came forward?
[laughter]
Strictly as to the amendment, I don't think we need to build in the rigidity of a, of a three-line requirement. I know of an example in North Rapid, actually, in my part of North Rapid, that is an existing property that is, would be the only one served by this line. But this line would also serve subsequent development up the hill off of Silver Street, if you picture the neighborhood, to where, I don't know that we need to have an absolute rigid line in there. I think discretion can be made both in the prioritization of petitions, and in terms of the approval of, of an individual project that may be just one residence, but that would serve future development. So for those reasons, I, I don't support the amendment.
Thank you. Let's go to Karen Olson.
I'm just looking for a definition. A couple of years ago, I'm aware of a situation where the line actually went from a series of houses. So there were four houses, and they all actually were on the exact same line that went through each of the houses. And I don't know how that fits into our definition here. And I would assume that probably exists in other places.
I'll try this, and I'll, I'll look to Alderman Johnson. My assumption is, we're not talking about individual lines. We're talking about services, actually. Is that, would that be a fair analogy, Alderman Johnson? In other words, no fewer than three houses can be on private, or on, on services, not individual lines because you have them up together. And I'll, I'm gonna go to Alderman Johnson. Since he was the motion maker, I don't want to put words in his mouth.
The answer would be yes, Mayor. But in many cases, that individual service line is what you're talking, is the private line.
Yep, very good. Okay, let's see. Alderman Olson, you still have the floor? Any additional comments?
I just, I just want to make sure that that situation is covered in some fashion because they all are all on actually the very same line with no...
I believe, I believe that is the intent. If there's, if there's three or more homes or services, that would be covered under this policy. I believe that is the intent.
Okay, thank you.
And Alderman Johnson, please correct me if I misspoke.
And that, and that, and the public, Mr. Ellis would be in agreement that this is, serves the same kinds of situations?
I don't think he has a vote, but, yeah. Okay, let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I guess I, can I ask Robert Ellis a question on the amendment?
Yes, on the amendment, please.
So what do you think about three people? Do you think because of the petitioning and the things, I guess I'm in agreement with, with Mr. Hurlbut, through the petitioning and the, and the different things that you have set forth already, that sets forth a priority, and that takes care of anybody, one, two, three, five, based on priority. So why set something, three or more? But I'd like your opinion, if I could, Robert Ellis, on this.
Mr. Ellis.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
From a budget standpoint, it's nice to eliminate some projects. But quite frankly, there's a number of situations that, that I could see come forward where, in fact, a few months ago, we had a person who owns a fourplex. It's one property, but there's four customers that live there. How would they fit into that program? You know, they are one customer. It's one billing customer. They wouldn't qualify for that. But it's really four people that live there. So there's a lot of gray areas. And that's what's difficult about the policy. There, there are so many different situations that you find out there as people bring forward those petitions. And how do they fit into this? It's difficult. It's hard to give us one recommendation.
Thank you, Robert. I guess that answers my question. Based on policy and priority, it will take care of itself. Because what happens, again, I think when you start setting two, three, four, you set us back in a position where we're picking and choosing, where at this point, it's based on what the Public Works is saying instead of the city council. It puts us in a less predicament by having somebody come forth with a one, two, or three, that we feel as, or as political people, we need to do instead of based on policy or procedure.
Okay, very good. Let's go on to, let's see, we have a couple of the people that haven't spoken. Just a reminder, we are talking only on the amendment. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy has not spoken yet.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I won't be supporting the motion on the floor for the, you know, just as Deb says, I think we just need to keep it as simple as possible. We, we start making it more complicated, then we're gonna end up having more people come forward again. So I think it's just keep it simple and move forward. Thank you.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to correct my, what I said. I'm not in support of the motion on the, the, the motion that is currently
The amendment.
The amendment. I, what I was trying to say was, I'm in support of the original motion. So I will be voting no on the amendment.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
Thank you, Mayor. I would only add that if we approve this without the amendment, certainly there could be a recommendation that came forward between now and when this works its way back up through committee. So, thank you.
Good point. Very good. Seeing no further lights, any further discussion? Seeing not, we are voting on the amendment, and the amendment only. And the amendment is to add nineteen seventy and also three services. Seeing no further discussion, all is in favor of the amendment. Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Oh, let's see. Do we want to do a roll call? Was there just, let's do a roll call, please.
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hadcock?
No.
Hurlbut?
No.
Okrepke?
No.
Chapman?
No.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Quaker?
No.
Okay, motion fails on a two to eight vote. We're back to the original motion. Original motion is to send this, ask the staff to draft a resolution based upon the seventy-thirty and bring, ordinance, thank you, and ordinance on the seventy-thirty rule, and bring that back to legal and finance. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm hoping that somebody in the audience or somebody has some roll aids for me. Because every time this, this topic comes up, I get stomach acid thinking about what we're doing to these people. It's been this way for ten or twenty years. We're coming to some resolve, a little bit better resolve than we've had in the past. I've asked the question several times, why do we consider these private lines? I've gotten zero answer. I mean, I think it's a simple question. Why do we consider them private lines? How do we know they're private lines? These, these, these lines were built in the era of the way things were done at that period of time. The comment was made about, it was the city's fault. I, I can recall the polybutyl, I don't know how to say that word, pipe, the P, the B pipe, whatever they call it, that was put in, and the city's paying for it. How is that the city's fault? City didn't put that pipe in. Now, if it breaks, we pay for it. We're talking about sewers, the basics of, of what the city council provides, and the city of Rapid City provides for the citizens are sewer and water. And here we're having a discussion about whether we should fix lines that are sixty, seventy, eighty years old. Life expectancy of these lines are seventy-five years. They've outlived their life expectancy. We've got our money's worth that we never paid anything for in the future, or in the past, excuse me. So I just, that's what's giving me the stomach acid. And I just, I'm hoping that someone could answer my I'm hoping that someone could answer my question of why these are considered private lines. Who made them private lines if they were installed like they were supposed to be installed at the time that they were installed? And I still pose that question. I just wish I could get an answer on it. I will support the motion that's on the floor, because I think it's the only opportunity we're gonna get to improve the situation we're in. But I would like to add a substitute amendment that says that we identify these people and we notify these people that they have private lines, and we put some sort of caveat in there, whether it's a filing at the courthouse or whatever it takes. And we talk about incentive to get these people to fix these lines. I'll give you some incentive right now. The incentive would be to post it publicly, that these people have a private line that they have to pay for to get it fixed. So when they go to sell their property, the next person that buys that piece of property understands that they're gonna have to pay $4,000 to fix their private line. I think that's incentive for them to get it fixed. Otherwise, they can sit in that house until, I don't know, maybe 10, 20 years until they come up with their $4,000 to fix their lines. So my substitute motion would be... Or added motion or whatever would be amendment to add the fact that we notify these people that have private lines and find a way to attach it to their property, so when they go to sell it, people that buy these things aren't buyer beware. I think it's just injustice that's been done in this city for a long time, and I think it's time for us as a council to fix it. And if it takes the 70-30 to get it passed with this caveat that gives them incentive to fix it, I would like... That's what I'd like to do, so...
Okay, so we have a motion to amend and a second. Discussion there again, we will hold the discussion strictly to the amendment. With that, Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
I guess I must have missed the amendment that's proposed. Is that 100%?
No. The amendment is to notify all the property owners that were identified per Mr. Ellis's slide that they are on a private line. And attach something... Let's go to... I'm gonna go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would recommend that the amendment be limited to simply notifying those with private lines. I don't believe that there is a mechanism to record anything in the chain of title that would provide that notice. But if we notify the current property owners, the residential property owners at least will be required to disclose that when they go to sell their property.
Okay. Is that all right with the motion maker?
No, it's not. I think that there's a mechanism to attach that to the property, and I think we should at least explore that option. So I guess if I could make the amendment to explore that option, I think there is an option to attach that to the property. That way, that's an incentive for them to fix it, because... Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Let's see. Deb Hadcock. Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Actually, I was gonna ask Jason if that was a legal issue and if it was something that we couldn't do on the second part, then...
I think Jason's already given us that answer, but if he wants to follow up?
I would just add that it's not something that pertains to current ownership or to a security interest in the property, so it's my opinion, it's not gonna be recordable at the Register of Deeds office.
So can I ask him another question?
Ask away, please.
Is there any type of alternative that we can use that Alderman Wyffenbach's trying to get to that would work for the city and be a legal thing to attach to their property?
Mr. Green?
I think the closest we could do would be to maintain that information as a public record here at City Hall, but that's not going to guarantee that the title companies are gonna pick those up when we have a transfer of property.
Okay.
You can't do... I'm sorry.
Anything else?
Can you do it as a covenants or something on the property? That can be recorded as a covenants at the courthouse?
Mr. Green?
Like we do easements?
It's not possible to record something in the title of property that somebody else owns without their consent.
That's true.
So unless they would agree to having something recorded of that nature, the answer's no.
Thank you, Jason, for answering this question.
Deb, anything else?
No, thank you.
Let's go to Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Wyffenbach, you may need to bring roll aids for me now, too, after messing this around. I agree 100% with you, Alderman Wyffenbach, and I do think we need to take every step possible to eliminate the unfairness to property owners who may or may not know they're sitting on a ticking sewer bomb. And with that, I think that as this comes back through committee, I think exploring the possible ramifications and costs associated with notification of these people is important to know. I would hate to see a flood of people rushing to take advantage of the reimbursement program and thereby we start running out of budget on projects that are not yet failing, because one of the key things is we're not experiencing failures of most of these lines at any given time. Thank you.
Very good. I see a number of lights. Let's go to... Oops. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock. Just a reminder, this is amendment. We are discussing the amendment only. Alderman Deb Hadcock.
If I could, we can bring this forward again with the changes on this draft, if we could, Mr. Wyffenbach, and bring that as one of the steps on here, and Robert could add that to it and still be... Move forward on this without having this amendment, if we could, Mr. Wyffenbach, because at this point, I think it's duly noted.
Okay. Any further discussion? Just a reminder, this, we're referring back to legal and finance, and we'll have every opportunity to discuss this as it's coming back through. Seeing no additional lights, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye? Opposed? Better have a roll call. That's sort of a weak yes and no.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Hurlbut?
Aye.
McCrekey?
No.
Chapman?
No.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Kroger?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. What was it, six to four?
Yes.
Motion passes on a six to four vote. We are back to the original motion as amended. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item 88, please.
It's a request... Approve a request by Leadership Rapid City, Class 2006, for a donation of approximately 300 tons of asphalt millings from the Rapid City of Rapid City, purpose of constructing a walking path adjacent to the Rapid City Humane Society. I'd move to continue this to the... Refer this back to the legal finance meeting.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to refer this back to legal and finance. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion passes. We do have an 88B. Robert, Mr. Ellis, that is yours, dealing with the quotes and Canyon Lake. I'm sorry, 88... I think I called it 88B, but it's... What did I write down? 88 plus, yes. Mr. Ellis.
Just a little bit of background here. If you recall, the night that the council declared the spillway, the emergency spillway fix, an emergency, we are getting ready to start phase one of the construction. Phase one of the construction... Is the installation of a, I guess, a relief valve so that we could drop the elevation of that lake down one to two feet. That's a requirement of our permit to prevent any pollution from moving downstream when we actually do fix the sinkhole in the spillway. We obtained three different quotes. Quinn Construction was the low quote for $14,750 to install this pipe, and you can see that diagram here on this exhibit. And I guess we would ask the council to approve the authorization of that... Or to approve the award of that work to Quinn Construction so they can move forward with doing that. We will be coming forward with the phase two, which is actually filling the sinkhole at a later date, but this is the initial phase, just to get things ready for that construction project.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Just point of clarification for the council. This is below $15,000. We did have the ability actually to approve this internally and have the mayor sign on it, but I thought it was only appropriate that I bring it back to the council, since this did have quite a bit of discussion, so that's why you're seeing it this evening. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd recommend the Public Works Director read in the other quotes, both the amount and the quote order.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Ellis, could you read those in?
Certainly. Quinn Construction...
Could you actually put it up on the screen for us, if you would, please?
Sure. Second quote was Core Construction Services, $14,800. Final quote was RCS Construction, $24,600.
And your recommendation is to go to?
Recommendation is for Quinn Construction, $14,750.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor. The chair, look for a motion before we approve. Okay? We have a motion, second for approval. Discussion on that motion. And the motion to approve is per staff recommendations. Is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My question would be for Public Works Director. We had this discussion previously, but there's a couple of gates on the spillway now, and of course, one of the questions we had during the initial discussions about repairing the dam was if those worked or not. My understanding is they do, and they fill the spillways down below in the park, I believe is what one of them does. Why can't we just use one of those gates and release the water into those ponds down below and then run it down the creek?
Mr. Ellis.
This work will use that existing gate valve that is in the dam itself. What we're doing here is...
Yeah?
What we're doing here, this exists right now. This is the pipe that goes through the dam, and then there's a little lever up here that you can open and close that gate. The problem is, the silt is about that high, so as soon as you open it, all that silt is gonna go down into the creek. What we're doing here... What we're doing here is we're installing a pipe that will go up. Here's the water elevation now, so you can draw the clean water off the top down into that pipe, so it can go out into the creek without really polluting it. This will be used for this project. This can be used for future projects. This can stay in place, so that anytime there is some drawdowns that you want to do without polluting, this will be in place for that. So ideally, this would have been built initially, but it's not there today.
Mr. Kroger, you still have the floor, sir? Very good. Thank you. Alderman Tom Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be voting against this expenditure. I continue to think the best way to fix our problem that we have at Canyon Lake is to do it right the first time. I don't see the imminent danger. I think there was alternatives to do a small drawdown and not spend a quarter of a million dollars, and what I, again, think of is one-time money spent that is wasted because it's certainly not used again, so I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Very good. Further discussion? Just a reminder, I see a couple of lights. The motion on the floor is to award the bid. That's what I will be keeping the motion to. Nothing else, please. Alderman Deb Hadcock.
I think based on this information, it's a very good thing what you're doing, and awarding this bid is a positive. At first, with some of the bentonite and the different things, I wasn't in agreement, but at this point, seeing what you're doing and the things that are going on with this is a positive to help this dam. And for reinforcement, I think either... For future use, I think the bentonite in there is gonna help the next step as well, so it's not just for the first step, so I don't think it is a waste. I think it's a positive, no matter how you see it.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And just another few items. Item number 95, we'll be receiving a report from staff on the model... The modeling of a possible... Of the effects of a possible breach and also the available funding sources.
Say, Sam?
It might be a good idea to continue this.
I warn everybody, please, if you could keep this to the motion on the floor, and it's awarding the bid.
I am. I'm talking about...
Please keep it to the motion, please, to awarding the bid. Keep your comments to there, please. I'm...
I'd like to offer a motion to continue this item until after item 95.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that motion? Okay. Very good. We have a motion and a second to continue this item until after item number... Was it 94 and 95? So we'd be taking item number 88B and continuing that until after item number 95. Discussion on that motion and that motion only, please. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We are on to number 89, please.
It's authorized staff to seek proposals for Canyon Lake Dam restoration. Move for approval.
We just... We just continue it.
We continue item 88B. Item 89 is now on the table. Okay? And the motion is for approval. And it was seconded, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Discussion on that motion, and we seem to be getting a little bit off-focus tonight, so I will be holding all further comments pretty close to the subject at hand. So the motion on the floor is to authorize the staff to seek proposals for the Canyon Lake Dam restoration. With that, Alderman Bob Hurlbut.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't care if we consider it now or at item 95, but I think we should consider all three of those at once and take care of it. So my motion is to continue this item 95.
Okay. We have a substitute motion and a second to take this after item 95, just for clarification. I want to make sure I have the order right. Just for clarification, I want to make sure I have the order right. We're going to take up ninety-five, then eighty-eight B, or take up item eighty-nine? Okay, very good. Everyone clear on the motion? Discussion on the continuation motion only, please. Alderman Karen Olson.
I won't be in favor of the motion to continue.
Thank you. Motion is to continue item eighty-nine until after item ninety-five. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Alderman Olson. We are on to item number ninety for the bids.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a number of bid items on the agenda this evening. The first, first item is... Is for the forty-third court water main reconstruction. We received bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, an amount of six hundred and ten thousand, twelve dollars and forty cents.
So moved. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ninety-one, please.
The item number ninety-one is the RU Lots paving. It's a friendship house. It's, we received bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, an amount of fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty cents.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-three, please.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, sorry.
Ninety-two is a two thousand and eight pavement marking contract. Received two bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Dakota Traffic Services LLC, an amount of thirty-two thousand, one hundred and six dollars and fifty-four cents.
So moved. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now ninety-three.
Item number three is the Dover Lane Water Main Reconstruction Project. We received bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting a bid from Shad Excavator, Excavation Incorporated, an amount of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety cents.
So moved. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Do we have a reason why there's such an extraordinarily large difference between both the Advertising Authority and the engineer's estimate on this particular project? These are my neighbors and friends, and I want this job done well.
We asked the same question. Excuse me. We asked the same question. Shod was extremely low. If you look at the other bids, they are seventy, seventy-two, fifty-five. I mean, they were in the range of the engineer's estimate. They were the only one that low. We called them to make sure that they submitted the right quote, and they claimed that they do want to do the project at that price, so...
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-four, please.
Item number ninety-four is for Rapid City Bus Storage Facility Phase Two. We received the bids as listed. Staff is recommending we continue this to the April twenty-ninth Public Works meeting for recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the April, what, twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth.
Very good. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number forty. Yep, we're back to item number forty, which was continued to actual, after item number ninety-four.
Okay. Item number forty is for the digital video recorder system, including monitor, server, antenna, and all necessary components. We received three bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the lowest responsible bid that meets all specifications, which is the L3 Communication Mobile Vision Incorporated, for the total amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. And if you'd like, myself or Chief Allender can cover...
Okay. Could we have a motion?
Move second.
Yeah, we have a motion, second, to accept the lowest responsible bidder, which is L3 Communications, for the sixty thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Why don't you explain very quickly why item number one is not considered... Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number one, where it says unable to tag video, what that means is it's unable currently under current system to place the date and time on the video, which I think would be fairly important, in a police vehicle. And then the second one is the audio transmitter recharge rate is too long. What you're saying is it takes too long to charge the battery for what they need at the FCPD. Chief Allender can give you more specifics on that if you would like.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval to accept number three, which is L3 Communication Mobile Vision Inc. for sixty thousand, three hundred and eight dollars.
One hundred and sixty thousand.
I'm sorry, one hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. Any further discussion? Karen, did you want to speak to this? Very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, no items that are mayor's items. We are on to council items and liaison reports. We are on to item number ninety-five. This is from Alderman Bob Herobud. Report analysis, report and analysis of downstream flood impact modeling of theoretical possible Canyon Lake spillway failure scenario. Mr. Herobud. Where's Mr. Herobud?
We have a presentation.
Well, there really isn't a presentation. This is an Alderman's item. Mr. Herobud. Item number ninety-five, which is your item on the agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and as you know, I've had a chance to discuss this with you in detail, and also with Robert Ellis, from which I have become much more comfortable with the decision we made. I would still like to, to just see where we are on the downstream impact modeling, partly and part because I want the public to know that what we were contemplating here was not a five-hundred-year flood possibility, and in fact, was less than even a hundred-year flood with a clear flood plain as a result of the seventy-two flood. So if you could just address that, that's largely my issue. I've been convinced that part of the effectiveness of the bentonite solution involves it being done without the dam being drained, and that it is a part of the long-term solution. And, and that it may very well not cost in the order of what we're actually getting authorization for. So I'm comfortable with it, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to have the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. We are on to item number eighty-nine, then. And let's see, if we could have Mr. LaCroy read eighty-nine back in, unless there was any action to be taken under ninety-five. I think it was...
Eighty-eight A, do we need to do that one first, and then eighty-nine, or just go?
Nope. The, the order will be item number eighty-nine, and then eighty-eight B, I think is...
Okay.
Whoa, hang on one second before you read that in. Mr. Herobud, did you have anything?
I still wanted to hear, just where are we with downstream modeling?
Very good. Mr. Ellis.
I visited with Anthony Carver Hall, the Pennington County Emergency Management Office Director, and he is working, or he was working with the National Weather Service, and I believe the Army Corps of Engineers, to provide that downstream modeling for the inundation area for full breach. In visiting with Anthony Carver Hall the other day, he indicated that that can be done, but the price tag that they would like to see for that is in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range. So of course, I'm not, I don't have that information available today. We did take a look, our staff looked at this over the weekend, to try to use the calculations that we have on volumes, volumes in the, in the, in the lake itself, compare those to historical vol, or flows at certain bridges and gauging stations that we have. We tried to come up with an inundation area. Now, it's simply something that we've penciled out on a map. We have done that. It does not have a professional engineer stamp on it, or any certification from FEMA, the Corps of Engineers, or, or anybody like that, but we have done that. It looks like it stays for the most part within the greenway that was established after the flood. However, when you get out to the valley, it spreads out, because now your volumes, or your, your velocity, the water slows down, you have flatter terrain, and it tends to just spread out a little bit more. So through Rapid City, you don't see that get into private property. As it moves out of town and out into the valley, and it's much more removed from Canyon Lake, it's harder to predict how that water will actually move, but it does look like it goes on private property when it moves out in that direction.
Alderman Herobud, you still have the floor, sir?
And thank you, Mr. Ellis, for bringing that information forward as quickly as you could. I did, of course, disagree that we should have had that in hand before we, we bought a solution, but I'm comfortable that, that this is proceeding as it, as it should. So thank you.
Thank you. No action being needed on that. We will now move to item eighty-nine. Mr. Lloyd LaCroy, could you please read that in?
Authorize staff to seek proposals for Canyon Lake Dam restoration. Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Very good. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. When this item was at Public Works the other day, I asked that when this came forward to Monday night, that there be time allowed to, for you to present the funding options that had been explored. That was supposed to be on the, on the Public Works agenda. It was not, and I think that's very important, that we gather that information. So at this time, if...
We're ready to bring it forward right now.
If I can get that information. Thank you.
Mr. Preston has some basic information. Since we don't know the dollar amount, we have tried to identify possible funding sources.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We took a look at what we felt could be possible funding sources for this dam, dam repair, excuse me. We're looking at federal grants, possibility, state grants, maybe, some sort of state and federal loans. If we receive any type of loan, of course, we'd have to identify some sort of repayment source. Out of the 2012 fund would be a possible place to fund this dam repair. Enterprise funds may be all a contribute part to the repair, and then general fund is another area that we could possibly fund this repair work from.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I, as far as the, the proposal, I think we should go ahead and approve the proposal, but in terms of the, the funding report, I think there needs to be more, a lot more information gathered, gathered on this, and, and I'm just worried we're going to get to the point where we're ready to implement a permanent fix, and we're going to have no idea where the money's going to come from.
Let's go to Robert Ellis, Public Works Director.
One of the tasks I would like our consultant to do is explore those funding options in more detail, have conversations with the state on the SRF loan program. We're also pursuing the federal option. You may be aware that we've received authorization. Essentially, we have to fill out a grant to actually receive the money, but we've been approved and appropriated for about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Canyon Lake Dam, so there is a little bit of money trickling in that way. I think as, as time goes along, we'll have...
Okay. Alderman Quaker, anything else, sir? Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make certain I know, this is for the permanent, permanent fix of the dam. My understanding, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I do support the permanent fix for the dam. I have somewhat of a different idea on the temporary fix, but I do support the item in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
This is just a clarification. As we move forward, this, I mean, the, under the project description, it says administration, design, construction, and construction and administration of Canyon Lake Dam and spillway, so it is both the dam and spillway. As this moves forward, will the, the bypass be a part of this discussion in any fashion?
Mr. Ellis.
That's being administered through a separate design contract that we're working with the game fish and parks. The two consultants will talk to one another. It will not be a part of this RFP, though, no.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval of item eighty-nine, which was authorized the staff to seek proposals for the Canyon Lake Dam restoration. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're back to eighty-eight B, and let's see. Mr. LaCroy, I'm not sure if you can actually read that in, because that was added to it. I'm going to go back to Mr. Robert Ellis. What this was, was authorization from the city council to accept the quotes, and I'm going to turn it over from there.
Yes, staff would ask the council to approve the award of the Phase One emergency repair to Quinn Construction for fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I forgot to mention the last time that I actually written down. While this is under the fifteen thousand, even though we did declare an emergency, I think that you, you made the right decision bringing this to the council, because if the, if the whole fix is over fifteen thousand, I think you, we would not want to skirt, I believe, bid laws or, or laws like that, if, when added together, the other parts of that fix exceed that. So I think you made the right decision. I appreciate the fact that you did bring it here. I still don't support the expenditure. I support the long-term fix, but, but thank you at least for bringing that forward. I think legally, that is, in my opinion, what we would have to do. Thank you.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion. Motion is for approval of the quotes from Quinn Construction. Fourteen thousand, how much?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, which was fifty dollars less than the other guy. Okay, just want to make sure everybody knew that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no from Alderman Tom Johnson. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number ninety-six, and this is the item brought forward by Alderman Herobud. Civic Center Parking Traffic and Handicap Access Management Issues, and we will go to Alderman Bob Herobud.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to only mention what this is about, because I think it should be referred back to either legal and finance or Public Works Committee for further investigation. I've spoken with Jane, and I'm spacing off Jane's last name.
Kramer.
Kramer, and also with Brian Malitzky on a separate occasion. He's on vacation currently. I want to just talk to him about concerns with the management of traffic flow when we have confluences of major events all at the same time. I think it's bad business for people to have such a horrible experience trying to even find a parking spot, and I think that with, with additional police patrolling alone and directing traffic, that may be the solution we're looking for, and I think we can work that up from the committee level, so... Oh, and also the handicapped access. There were far from enough handicap spots, and I know that because I was accompanied by a person who is handicapped, was able to walk from the Civic Center, I'm sorry, from the Central High School parking lot where he had to park all the way over, and, and paid for it in pain the next couple of days, but was able to do so. And so I'd also discussed with Brian and Jane about some temporary kind of contingent handicap spots that you only open up as handicap spots during events that you know are going to be highly crowded. So I believe that's as, as much as needs to be discussed on it at this point. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Very good. Let's see. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
I would move to continue this item to Public Works for further discussion.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to take this to Public Works. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to, let's see, Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Just, I was going to answer one of his questions, but if you want to take it back, that's fine.
Yep, I'll just take it back.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Motion is to take this, to actually direct this back to Public Works. Any further discussion? Seeing none, and I assume that's the next Public Works meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-seven, National League of Cities Program in Rapid City. This is brought forward by Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an update on the program that's coming through the National League of Cities in conjunction with the South Dakota Municipal League for the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of June and July first. That program is well underway in terms of its planning. It'll look like on the twenty-ninth of June, we'll do some sort of mobile workshops where we'll make our way down to Mount Rushmore and enjoy the evening lighting ceremony at Mount Rushmore. Then the next day, we'll have a presidential debate, and there's some discussion now about opening that up for the community and charging some fee for the community at large to come and participate in that presidential debate with the foremost impersonators of Presidents Washington, Jefferson, Lincoln, and Roosevelt. And if we do that, the National League of Cities is talking about maybe leaving that money in the community to start some sort of ongoing education program for high school students, maybe once a year, some public service or public involvement program based on the proceeds that would be garnered from that, that event. Then that afternoon, we'll have Dr. David Vance-Like from the Maxwell Business School at the University of Syracuse lead the participants in a strategic planning session for local government leaders. That night, we would be at the Prairie Edge for a reception and enjoy downtown Rapid City, and we've worked out that we could use the trolleys for some transportation for that, to not really get people from the Holiday Inn to downtown, but really to showcase the trolleys. And then the next day, we would finish up the strategic planning with Dr. Vance-Like again, and then talk about how the strategic management of those plans, and then finish the day with a mobile workshop of 2012 projects around the community, and, and stopping off at a couple, probably the Civic Center, since that's the, the largest one that's under construction now, and then picking out some other project to do. The reason why I bring this up is that without a lot of advertising around the country right now, we have almost sixty people around the country who've signed up to come here, and this is more than the National League of Cities will normally get at this time, a couple of months before a presentation. So I think we're doing well in terms of the number of people that will come to our community. But I also would like to note that to our own council and city employees who would like to attend this, this is, in my understanding, no different than any other National League of City or travel request that you'd like to put in. So there's a registration form, I believe. I had Kay put one of these in everyone's packet tonight. So if you're interested in going, we need to put this on our legal and finance agenda to appropriate those funds, so that members here, city staff, city council, whomever would like to attend, could go to those sorts of things. Last comment will be, the Vice President of the National League of Cities, Kathy Novak, who's the mayor of North Glen, Colorado, will kind of facilitate that presidential debate and, and get those four presidents talking about strategic planning and strategic management for local government leaders. So I'm looking forward to it. A lot of people have put in a lot of work, and we've got a lot of partners around town that are playing a part in this. So if council members would like to go, at some point, we should start thinking about putting in modified travel requests to, to go to this program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there are any questions, I'll answer them.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman, for your work on this, what do you call it, networking, as I say. It's a very positive way that we have used, or in this case, Mr. Chapman has used, to bring these people to Rapid City, the National League of Cities. He, he couldn't have done this unless he was traveling and going to different places and doing the network that he, networking that he has done. Mr. Chapman is the man that has done this. He has had work and help on this, but kudos to him. This was his kind of thing that he has done, and I appreciate everything he's done on this. What a great way to show what travel does for us, and that Rapid City is a positive place to see and, and come learn more about what we're about, and about, about what the National League of Cities is about. Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, we are on to item ninety-seven A, and we had another item under council items and liaison report. Alderman Deb Hadcock and ADA update.
Another speech. Just kidding. Another kudos to Rapid Transit Director Rich Sagan. There's a thanks and recognition from our committee with the upgrades for public transportation and awareness of accessibility needs of the community. Number two, he has helped with the wheelchair... the wheelchair basketball, which will be held west, at the West Community Center, September thirteenth, starts at five o'clock. They do help the people in wheelchairs to kind of fix their wheelchairs and, and see what they can do to help them for about two hours, and then the game starts at seven. We have an ADA picnic that's coming up at Canyon Lake Park Friday, July twenty-fifth at one-thirty. Lots of food and entertainment. And a big thank you, Rich Sagan and his staff have been working on moving some bus benches and some different facilities, the shelters. And thanks to Mr. Wyffenbach and Mr. LaCroy and the mayor. It has been a positive thing. We're moving four of them in the more accessible and the more used areas, and they have helped and been instrumental in that. That was one of the committee's issues, and we appreciate Mr. LaCroy and Mr. Wyffenbach and the mayor for helping Rich Sagan and, and our committee get that done. And one more thing is that the committee is offering up a resolution of support on the proposed ADA upgrades being done on the Civic Center Theater. We think as well, the mayor and Brian Maliski and his staff and the Board of Directors from the Civic Center, that has been in need of this committee for many, many years, and they have stepped up to the plate, and this committee supports that. So very positive, and things are getting done with this committee, and because of the mayor, he's been coming to the meetings, Brian Maliski and some of the staff supporting this committee. We appreciate you all, and we thank you for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, we will move on. We are to the public hearing items, item number ninety-eight through one thirty-one, and the chair would look for motion to open the public hearing for items ninety-eight through one thirty-one. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see, at this point, let's see. Do we have any speaker request forms? One twenty-eight? Yep, we're onto that one. Okay, we do have a speaker request form from Jamie Carpenter, item one twenty-eight.
Ah, yes, council. We were just given about probably fifteen minutes ago the memorandum. We're requesting that this be continued for two weeks so we can have our attorneys look over it and have further discussion other than three minutes in the hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We also have one from a James Carpenter. Did you want to speak, or?
I just echo her, James Carpenter, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I just echo her request. We did just receive this probably about half hour, forty-five minutes ago, and haven't had really a chance to look through it or determine what the options are gonna entail, so I would also request to possibly extend it to the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. Seeing no further speaker requests. We do not close the public hearing at this time. We leave it open, and the chair would ask if any items, items number ninety-eight through one eleven are to be removed from the continued public hearing consent items. Bob, did you have any you need to remove? How about anybody from the staff or from the council? If so, please turn your light on. Seeing none, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, item number ninety-eight through one eleven. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, the chair would look for a chair for a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second, close public hearing on items ninety-eight through one thirty-one. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to the consent public hearing items, items one twelve through one seventeen, and the chair will ask if any of those items, one twelve to one seventeen, are going to be pulled from the consent, from staff or from the council. Anybody reaching for the lights? Okay. Wow, okay. Let's go to Bob Dominic.
We need to pull one twelve.
One twelve. Very good. Any others? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve items one thirteen through one seventeen inclusive on the consent calendar. We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to item one twelve, and Alderman Deb Hadcock, I believe you read that one in, one twelve.
Sorry. One twelve is the Laurel A. Hawkins DBA RAXX billboards, twenty-three-ten North Maple Avenue for retail on-off sale, malt beverage license, no video lottery. Move to table.
Okay, we have a motion, second to table. There is no discussion on tabling motions.
Jason, he needs to talk.
Then, if that's the case, I'm going to ask that you withdraw your motion, because there is no discussion on tabling motions.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Is that all right with the second here? Okay, very good. We have no motion on the floor, so let's do it this way. Let's, for the sake of discussion, if I just get a motion to approve, and then that way we can discuss it.
How about move to continue?
That'd be fine, either one. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue to the next council meeting. With that, sorry, Jason, I couldn't let you speak, but those are your rules.
They're not mine, they're the council's.
Yeah, and, oh, by the way, I was just reminded that you can only talk on a continuation motion.
The continuation isn't an appropriate motion. The tabling motion would not have been appropriate because this is an alcohol license. The council needs to take affirmative action to dispose of the license. So rather than laying it on the table, you need to continue approve or deny. Thank you.
Very good. So what you're saying was the continuation motion was correct, and therefore germane. Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is continue this item to the next council meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Are we gonna, if we continue this for two more weeks, is this gonna, are we gonna be able to come up to a satisfactory answer so that we can, we can make a decision? Or do we need to put it out a month or two or whatever? Because right now, we keep continuing it week after week after week. I mean, do we need to give you more time? Is two weeks gonna be enough, or do we need to postpone it for a month or two?
Okay, Vicky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission will review this item at their Thursday's meeting, and they will continue it to their May eighth meeting. The owner of the property to date has not submitted the parking plan, so it very well could be a month from today before it's before the council.
Okay. Mr. O'Krepke, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we, that we continue this for at least a month, for a month, whatever the date is appropriate.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue this to the second city council meeting.
May nineteenth.
In May, May nineteenth. Is that your motion? Very good. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to the non-consent public hearing items. This is items one eighteen through one thirty-one. Item one eighteen, please.
It's a request by Dream Design International for Signature Homes LLC for amendment to adopt the comprehensive plan to revise the major street plan by relocating a minor arterial street, and this is located on the proposed LaCrosse Street north of Seeger Drive. Move for approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one nineteen, please.
Request by Centerline Inc. for Action Development Inc. for variance to subdivision regulations to weigh the requirements to install sidewalk, water, and sewer along East North Street, and to reduce the pavement width from twenty-six feet to twenty-four feet along AR Boulevard and AR Lane as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. This is located northeast at the intersection of Century Road and East North Street, and the motion is to deny without prejudice at the applicant's request.
We have a motion, second to deny without prejudice at the applicant's request. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one twenty, please.
Authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right to protest future assessment for the installation of curb gutter sidewalk along Elkville Road as in abuts lot one, and this is located at the intersection of Elkville Road and Homestead Street. Move for approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item one twenty-one, please.
A request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineer, Inc. for Todd Christopher of First National Bank for variance and subdivision regulations to reduce the pavement width from twenty-six feet to twenty-four feet with the shared access easement, and reduce the shared access easement from fifty-nine to thirty feet to weigh the requirements to install sidewalks, streetlight conduit, sewer, water within the shared access easement, to weigh the requirements to install sidewalk curb gutter along Elkville Road, to waive the requirement to install sidewalks along Homestead Street as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. This is located southwest at the intersection of Elkville Road and Homestead Street. Motion be to approve with stipulations in part and deny in part as Planning Commission's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with stipulations in part and deny in part per the Planning Commission's recommendations. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Kieran Olson.
I'm just assuring myself that the denial is to, to give an exception to the homes. There will be a sidewalk on Homestead Street.
Bob, can you answer that question? The question is, is there will be, I think...
I'm just wanting to make sure.
Want to make sure.
That's what I understand this to be. That's what the denial in part is.
There is at least, there is a sidewalk at least on one side of Homestead Street, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I need to know. I'll be in support of the motion.
Very good. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item one twenty-two, please.
A request by Dream Design International for Signature Homes LLC for amendment to adopt the comprehensive plan to change the land use design from low-density residential district with a planned residential development to medium-density residential district with a planned residential development. This is located north of Country Road and east of Cobalt Avenue and one forty-third Street. Motion be for approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Just a question, Bob. You have houses, and you have the proposed floodplain right next to the houses. Are they in the hundred-year floodplain? Is that why we're building, and they're gonna build according to the hundred-year floodplain in that area?
There'll be no houses in the hundred-year floodplain.
On your plat, it says, sorry, I didn't ask you this before, Bob, but it says proposed floodplain, and then the houses are right next to them in your exhibit.
Deb, you still have the floor, ma'am.
While you're looking that up, Bob, is this a TIF area? Vicky? Is this not a TIF area?
I guess we can ask.
Is it in, yes. It's in perimeter.
I believe it's in the, the TIF that was approved for the lift station that's been constructed out there previously.
So it didn't have to have a commercial piece in this? Because I thought we put a commercial piece in this in order to make it, that was hers. Okay.
Okay. Very quickly, we're gonna get a little bit off base, but please go ahead if you can get the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a commercial piece, and that is Jamie Carpenter's property. And this is in the Mall Ridge Lift Station, which is tax increment fifty-five, which has been approved several years ago, a couple years ago. Thank you.
Deb, you still have the floor. I think you were asking the questions as far as the floodplain.
I apologize, can't get the slide projector to work, but there would be no houses in the, in the floodplain. The applicant has had a study done, and FEMA has changed the floodplain out there, and I'm not sure if that got linked.
Deb, you still have the floor.
I'll probably say no on this, just because we're not sure on this, and, and I think there is houses next to this, and it's not gonna affect it anyways.
Okay. Further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Alderman Deb Hadcock. Item one twenty-three, please.
It's a request by Dream Design International for Signature Homes for an amendment to adopt the comprehensive plan, change land use designation from low-density residential to medium-density residential with a planned residential development, and this is located north of Country Road and east of Cobalt Avenue and west of one forty-third Street. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank one twenty-four is where we're on.
It's a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Harley Tyler for the variance of, variance to subdivision regulations to weigh the requirements to install sidewalk along Carriage Hills Drive in Lysin Court, and to reduce the pavement width from forty to twenty-seven feet along Carriage Hills Drive as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. And this is located on the south, southern terminus of Carriage Hills. Move for approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item one twenty-five, please.
A request by Spurlock Consulting for TK and Gracer Investments LLC for variance to subdivision regulations to waive curb gutter sidewalk, asphalt, streetlight conduit, sewer, and water along Dunn Road and Radar Hill Road as per chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rapid City Municipal Code. And this is located south of Dunn Road and west of Radar Hill Road. Motion be denied without prejudice at the applicant's request.
We have a motion, second to deny without prejudice at the applicant's request. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item one twenty-six, please.
It's to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a waiver of right to protest future assessment for the installation of sidewalk and additional pavement along Jolly Lane as it abuts a portion of Track A, and this is located at the Jolly Lane terminus east of Elkville Road. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations, correct? We're on one twenty-seven?
That was one twenty-six.
Okay, one twenty-six. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Kieran Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just trying to clarify whether there's, is there any sidewalk along this portion of Jolly Lane? None?
Bob? Alderman Olson, you still have the floor, ma'am.
Well, I, I mean, I do have some qualms about this. I mean, I realize that, in other words, what you're basically doing is you're not asking them to put in sidewalk, because there isn't sidewalk in any other places, but it does seem to me like there's gonna be a lot more pedestrian traffic along here because of the houses and so forth. So, all right, thank you very much.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Alderman Sam Quaker.
Oftentimes, when we have these types of discussions on sidewalks, we hear, and we didn't hear it tonight, but we hear that they can be ordered in at any time, and the council never does. And, and it just seems to me that if there's going to be pedestrian traffic along this, along this road, it isn't a good idea to, to waive the sidewalk. Can you let me know how many units, I mean, do we know how much housing will be generated in this area? How many housing units this affects?
Vicky, can you answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is a variance that's associated with a plat document that's to expand the boundaries of the emergency foster care facility at the northern terminus of Jolly Lane. A stipulation of approval of this variance is that they sign a waiver of right to protest, and that they do construct sidewalk on one side of that cul-de-sac. The city council approved a plat on property directly west of this site. It's been a few months ago, and they required that that developer put sidewalk on their side of Jolly Lane. So at the end of these two projects, we will, at a minimum, get sidewalk along the cul-de-sac of Jolly Lane.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Alderman Quaker. Very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate the statement I'd made previously about waiving all these sidewalks. I could just, I see this one coming down the road for a future council. Continue to waive sidewalk requirements. Alderman Quaker made the suggestion that the council never orders them in, and that's probably the truth. probably the truth. Just continue to waive these sidewalks. They're going to put us in the same position that we're in over on the west side of town at Canyon Lake and where somebody has to come up with the money to put the sidewalks in, the people buy the houses and the sidewalk. It's got to get put in. I'm hoping that we can narrow these down in the future and just not let this happen. Thanks.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's see, we better take a quick roll call, please.
Hadcock.
Aye.
Robbitt.
Aye.
O'Kreppke.
No.
Chapman.
Aye.
Wyffenbach.
No.
Olson.
No.
Kroger.
Aye.
Quaker.
No.
Lacroix.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Motion passes on six to four vote. Very good. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number one twenty-seven.
Is a request by Dream Design International for variance to the subdivision regulations to install sidewalk and additional pavement along Jolly Lane and Lane as per Chapter sixteen point sixteen of the Rappis City Municipal Code. And this is located at the Jolly Lane terminus east of Elkville Road. Approved with stipulations, motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item one twenty-eight. That's Deb's.
A request by Spurlet Consulting Incorporated for Doak LLC for a tax increment district project planned located east and west of Haynes Avenue and north and south of Country Road. This was without recommendation from Legal, Finance and Planning Commission approved. I think the city council needs discussion, so I won't make a motion. Move approval for discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. I would just ask that if there is an intent to continue this item that we try and dispose of it quite quickly or fairly quickly and not get into a lengthy debate, if we're going to continue that. If it is not going to be continued, of course, we will debate it fully. So with that, let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Is this approved with the stipulations that Malcolm Chapman had brought forward last time?
That is.
With the project plan with the stipulation that the developer will put in the hundred thousand?
Okay. Why don't we do this? The motion on the floor is for approval as per the Planning Commission's recommendation. Did you want it to go to Karen Olson?
Yes, that'd be good. Thank you.
Let's go to Karen Olson and then we'll come back to the council. Karen, you had.
I'd move to continue this item for two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry, Karen. I meant Karen Bowman. Well, okay. We do have a motion and a second to continue this item, okay? It is a substitute motion. Let's debate that one real quick, see if everybody wants to continue. If not, we'll go on. So discussion, discussion on the motion to continue at this time only, please. Anyone wish to speak to that? Karen, did you want to speak very quickly on that or? Okay, very good. Any other discussion as far as a continuation motion? Okay, let's see, I want to just go in the right order here. Alderman Tom Johnson, let's go there. I'm sorry, Sam, did you want to talk to the continuation motion? Okay, I'm going to just go down the list and I just want to make sure I don't miss anybody. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish that we withdraw the continuation motion so we could have some discussion, at least get the options from Karen Bowman on the floor. Thank you for that latitude, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I guess my question about the continuation, the carpenters asked for continuation, but it looked like based on one of the options that they came back with some figures saying that three hundred thousand dollars would probably take care of the drainage. Is there still a need for continuation if that three hundred thousand dollars is put in the project plan? So I guess that's a question for the carpenters.
Okay. Jamie, did you want to, if you understand, I just want to make sure you understand the question and if you could just give us a yes or no or?
Yes, we still need to understand the ins and outs of it.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a follow-up for the continuation. You know, two weeks ago, we continued this so that there could be some discussion, just so that there would be discussion. I'm just wondering if that discussion took place over the last couple of weeks and if not, what makes us think that discussion will take place over the next couple of weeks?
Did you want to direct that?
No, just a comment.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the continuation is appropriate and I have one request for information when this comes back and that is for the parties involved in, you know, to know who Doak LLC is. I'm not sure who's involved in the, in that LLC and I think it's appropriate that the council have that information when it comes forward next time. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm prepared to vote tonight and I wish the council would, would again withdraw the motion that Alderman Chapman had talked about. I think we had some discussion last time and offered an additional couple of weeks to do some work. I think the information is probably there for the applicant. I think there were remarks on another item that said they'll do everything in their power to stop this development. Probably lends more to why the continuation is being requested. I'm prepared to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Kreppke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly appreciate Alderman Chapman and Alderman Johnson's comments and had it not been for the carpenters just now getting a piece of document from the city staff, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support it. Had they not been that happening tonight, I think to make sure that they give the opportunity to visit with their lawyers to make sure that it's right, I think it's, I think holding it off or continuing it for two more weeks is probably not unreasonable. So I'm going to support the motion on the floor because I think we need to give the carpenters a chance to visit with their lawyers having just now received this paperwork.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was prepared to vote on this tonight as it stood. I was prepared to vote on it last week as it stood. I have a real question about the procedure that's taking place tonight, just adding this on. I think I would like to refer a question to our city attorney that I don't see how this can be done, but maybe, I mean, just adding, we're just adding on another project on here that hasn't went through the process. There's been no financials put in place. There's been none of the stipulations that all the other TIF people have to go through. We're adding another person on to a TIF. It's just, it makes no sense to me whatsoever. I would, I can understand Alderman Olson's, you know, wanting to continue this because we're putting in the box and said if we're going to continue this, let's continue it. I think she made the motion that she felt she wanted to continue it. I have, I was ready to vote on the, on this project plan the way it stood. I can't understand adding these things to it. It doesn't make any sense to me. Seems like out of procedure. Can I pass to the city attorney?
Sure. Procedure question, please.
My question would be, is this, does this fit the guidelines of, that the city's set forward on TIFs? I mean, we're adding and subtracting as we go along and it just doesn't make sense.
Let's go to Jason Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The answer is yes, it does. The council has before it the recommendation of the Planning Commission and the TIF committee. At this point in time, it is within the purview of the council to add or delete items to the plan, to the project plan. You haven't approved one yet, so it's before you in the first instance even though you've seen it a number of times. You've got all the authority that you need today to either add or delete items.
Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor and just, just a reminder to everyone, the motion actually on the floor is for continuation, but we're allowing a little latitude here, but please continue.
Well, I'm hoping that I'm not taking latitude. I'm really questioning, I would, if we can do this and, and there's three options on here that, we just got this tonight, there's no way that can, understand three options in one night. I don't, but still, I still have the question that whether we can add another person, a whole other entity, to a TIF. I just, I don't think that makes sense to me. It just.
Did you want, Jason?
I want to ask that question again.
Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council has already acted to create the TIF boundaries, so all of the property that will be included within the TIF has already been delineated. All you're doing at this point is deciding how much money you're going to spend on what projects and that is definitely within the authority of the council tonight.
Okay. Anything else?
One more question and I'll limit it to that and then I'll defer to the rest of the council. What they want to do, I will do whatever they want to do. I'm ready to vote, obviously. My question would be, Jason, is that the TIF process requires the multiple steps for Doak LLC they had to go to. They had to present their items, they had to present their financials, you know. I don't see that happening with this, this person we're adding to the TIF. I just want to make a hundred percent sure if we put this in there that it's, otherwise I'm going to vote to continue if the council feels it necessary to add this item on, otherwise I'm ready to vote on the other items. So that's why I'm trying to get that, my arms around that.
Help me with the question. The question is, is it appropriate to add additional parties?
Isn't it appropriate to add additional parties without having to go through all the same hoops that Doak went through, through the TIF committee showing their financial statements, showing their project plans, all those things to the TIF committee, the Planning Commission and everybody? I mean, this is a whole different entity.
Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council is not adding people to the project plan, you're adding project costs. If you believe that the costs that have been presented to you by the carpenters are costs that should be added to the project plan, you can do that tonight. If you don't believe that they're appropriate, you don't have to add them to the project plan. It's equally appropriate to continue the item if you're not ready to make that decision. Either way, you're well within your authority.
Okay. Very good. Anything else? Okay? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to comment that I think it would be appropriate to make changes at this point because we haven't adopted a project plan yet and also address the issue of we're not adding any new people, it's just dollars that we're adding here. I'm comfortable with continuing the item if the carpenters think that they need some time, but to open up the process even more so, but I don't think that's necessary. I'm not going to continue it again. I will vote to continue if that motion is still on the floor, but I, I don't think that it's necessary. If there is not discussion over the next two weeks by whatever party, I think we take this item up and we vote on it. The second comment I would have is that I don't know how appropriate it is to bring things out of that TIF policy review committee and then start trying to make those policies up here on the council today. Those things are just being talked about at the policy review committee and have not been approved yet to even make recommendations to the council, but I hear them starting to creep in and starting to ask applicants to do those things when we haven't as a council adopted those policies. I don't think that that's appropriate.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hadcock.
Based on this company following the rules that the TIF committee, the Planning Commission and the city council made them follow and then adding more things that we have done from the TIF committee of the new TIF committee rules, I think Malcolm Chapman made a good point. Our policy and procedure, what is in place right now, these people have followed. Not only have they followed it once, they're going through it again. This is the second time and every time they come, we have something new that we're adding to this. I just talked to a guy today that was tired of the way we run things at City Hall with this type of issue and now we're doing again on a continuance motion after he followed the policy and procedure. I understand what the carpenters are going through. They've been through it with the TIF and unfortunately, this is the second one their property's in. I totally understand, but based on policy and procedure of the TIF committee now, these people went through the hoops and they've jumped not only once, they're jumping again. Now we're going to continue it based on something else. I think that's unfair. I think what City Hall is doing is not City Hall, it's sometimes this city council that based on the information and the things that these people have to go through, we're making them wait and that's wrong. They are doing the things that they have to do now and now you're going to continue it again. If you're on the other side of this or you've ever been on the other side of this, this is very discouraging of this council to do and the things that we are doing are wrong. So based on that, I understand what you're going through, but I also understand the other side is too, ma'am, so I won't be voting on the continuance.
She got there. Alderman Bill O'Kreppke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to vote in favor of continuing this thing, but this is the last time that I'm going to, I'm going to be forward. I mean, two weeks ago, we said make sure you get, make sure you do all that and, and so I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm going to, I'm going to support the continuation motion this time, but next time, next meeting in two weeks, I'm going to be ready to vote. That's my comments.
Very good. Thank you. Seeing no further lights, motion on the floor is to continue this for two weeks. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Robbitt.
Aye.
O'Kreppke.
Aye.
Chapman.
Did you want clarification? The motion on the floor is strictly to continue this item for two weeks. That is the motion that's on the floor. There's no amendments, there's nothing else. It's strictly a continuation motion.
Aye.
Wyffenbach.
No.
Olson.
Aye.
Kroger.
No.
Quaker.
Aye.
Lacroix.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Robbitt. Hadcock?
No.
Tye.
Okay, motion fails. So we are back to the original motion and that is the motion to approve per the Planning Commission's recommendations. With that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
We have a number of lights up. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm disappointed at the outcome of the previous motion, but I guess since we're voting on this tonight, I'd like to have an answer on, on a couple of things. I think the first is I'd like to know if we're, I don't know if we're entitled to know or not, but what the substance of the information that was provided to the carpenters tonight, I have no idea what that, what that was. I also, and I'll hold my next question until after that's answered.
Karen, can you shed some light on what?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last council meeting, you folks asked and the carpenters and us to get together and see what we could come up with, with some dollar figures and the carpenters did provide that for me. That's the three hundred thousand, that's in option three. I put together this memo so you kind of had an idea of where we stood, the, if you don't mind me elaborating. The three options, the first one was to do it just as the Planning Commission requested. The second option is, is the request that the council had from the last meeting to have the developer pay for all the costs and that's what I did with option two. I also included the thirty-one thousand that they wanted to reallocate up to the capital I also included the 31,000 that they wanted to reallocate up to the capital costs out of their necessary inconvenient costs. So that's option two. Option three is that same thing, only I added $300,000 to the project plan based on the carpenters' information that they provided to me and put that together as a separate item. It's a developer B. I put it under the necessary inconvenient costs so that when they have the opportunity to get more information from their engineering and when they get some, some idea of what they're going to actually do with their property, they can come back to the tax increment financing committee and reallocate that money from the necessary inconvenient costs into something that, that you folks will see, actually see. And the reason I did that is it's hard for the carpenters to come up with that dollar figure. They've visited with FISC Engineering and I've visited with Janelle at FISC Engineering, and they just can't come to a finer tuned dollar figure other than that 300,000. So that's why I put it that way and, and that's why you're seeing it the way it is. And so I did try to, sorry.
That's right. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Do you have a recommended option?
I would recommend the option three because that's something that the carpenters are recommending and that's something that appears that the council, you know, is requesting that we work with the carpenters to give them some opportunity. This will give them an opportunity in the next five years to come back to you with an actual dollar figure.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Is it appropriate at this time to offer an amendment to the motion on the floor to add on option number three?
Yes, it's certainly appropriate.
I would offer a, I would offer an amendment to the motion on the floor to add in option number three.
Nope, this will be a motion to amend.
A motion to amend?
Yep.
To add in option number three? And, and after we voted on that, I have a couple of comments.
Okay, we have a motion, a motion to amend and a second, and that is to add the language as presented by the staff, which is option number three. Any discussion on that? Alderman Quaker, did you have any additional comments? If not, we can come back around to it.
Not to this motion, but after.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I support the motion on the floor. I think this is the right way to do it. I believe that we just heard from our staff member that as close as they could come is 300,000. That number will be the same this week as it will be in a couple of weeks. I'd encourage the council to adopt that. The other thing I'd like to say is that, is in my terms, and I'm not certain whether it clearly states it in here, but the 300,000 have to be a community cost. And hopefully the carpenters understand of that as well, that we're not paying developer costs. And at some point, when they come back through the necessary convenient costs, I will be looking, or somebody sitting hopefully at this, at this counter in my place if I'm replaced, will be approving community costs, again, not just private developer costs. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question is, before when we talked about this, we talked about the developer putting up the money. We also talked about two phases of affordable housing, eight lots in the first phase as well as eight in the second phase. I think as I glance through this, I see eight in the first phase. I don't see that in the second phase. Am I just missing it?
Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I took the language right from the minutes, but you are correct. We did talk about both of those phases and the developer has agreed to do that. So if you want to clarify that to your motion, that's fine too, I think.
Okay, let's go to Alderman Deb Hatcock. There again, the motion, motion to amend.
Yeah, this is on number three. Can someone explain, in addition, 300,000 in necessary convenient costs to be borrowed by a second developer as phase two in the third year of the project plan have been included? The money is coming from, the 300,000 is coming from what's already in there?
Let's go to Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The option three is to allow the carpenters or, or as a third or second developer, if the carpenters should, you know, sell the property to somebody else or something. That developer could come in as option three and borrow $300,000 of their, from their bank and, and request from the tax increment committee to reallocate that 300,000 or whatever that dollar figure is for their, their capital costs from the necessary convenient costs, which is where I put it, to a capital cost for a specific amount or a specific dollar thing. The reason that the third year came in there is when I visited with the carpenters about a timeframe, they weren't planning to do anything within the next couple of years. They thought the third year would be about appropriate. And I used that, that year so that I could come up with an interest rate and an interest amount to add to that, that project plan. So that's where it came from.
And just for clarification, whether it's third year, fourth year, or fifth year, under state statute, all improvements within the, within the TID district have to be at least under contract by the fifth year.
Correct.
And so the reason you put the third year in there is just for your calculations of interest?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Deb, anything else?
So, I don't know if I'm getting this or I'm just tired. So the 300,000 you will put in there for these people to use within five years is the 300,000. And they could come back to this TIF and get this money. And who's putting up the 300,000?
The developer. The developers will be required to upfront the money.
So the guy that's doing this TIF now?
No, the carpenters.
So the carpenters have to borrow the money? Okay. And the people that are doing this TIF are okay with this? I guess we should ask them if that's my question.
If you'd like to pose that question, we could certainly answer it. Karen, can you answer or?
Yes, I can answer that question for you, Mr. Mayor. The original developers are okay with doing it this way. They've seen a copy of this also. And the third option is, is okay with them? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you for explaining that, Karen.
Any further discussion?
And counsel.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to amend. Everyone clear on that? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are back to the original motion as amended, which is option three. Discussion on that motion. Please. Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions. There was discussion originally in reading the minutes of the TIF committee regarding the box culvert. The suggestion was made in that, in the committee that we only be responsible for the oversizing costs for the box culvert and not the entire cost of the culvert. Has that, has that been adjusted in the final plan? And are we paying only for the difference rather than the full amount?
Karen?
Thank you. I, if you want more clear answers, you probably should ask the engineering firm that was working on this. They did talk about that at the tax increment committee meeting, about the, the different costs and what, what it would be, and they ended up with that dollar figure. I don't know that it is strictly oversizing costs. And if you would like to have the developer talk about that, I can certainly turn it over to them.
I would sure like to have clarification of that.
And Alderman Quaker, if you could just restate your question? I think it's basically, what you're asking is whether there's any developer's cost or is it all oversizing cost for the culverts? Is that a fair analogy?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I believe that the base size would be about $60,000 worth of culvert, culvert cost. That's neglecting the historic flows that caused the box culverts. The base size, I guess, would be based upon a 48-inch RCP to the tune of about $60,000 to install it.
Okay, so does the TIF include the difference or the full amount of the culvert?
Currently includes the full amount.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
There, there, that, that really needs to be corrected, and I hope the council would agree with correcting that. You know, you read the minutes and here our city finance officer expressed concern about that issue. Our mayor expressed concern about that issue. I, I don't think that the, the city should be picking up the full cost of the culvert if, if the true developer's cost is the difference. What are we doing after all the discussion on TIFs? I, I hope we wouldn't think about putting all of this cost on, on the taxpayers. This really needs to be adjusted out. And I'm not sure what amendment to offer because I don't know what that, I really don't know what that, that cost, that true cost would be of the, of the difference. Do we, do we know what that, do we know what that is?
Karen?
As, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Kale mentioned, I think at the tax increment committee, this was discussed quite a bit. Part of it was that the length of time that we had gone back and forth with this developer, it's been a year since he's been waiting. I think that was, that came into play. And I do believe he mentioned that it was 60,000. That was the base cost at the time at the meeting, and the TIF committee agreed to fund the whole thing.
Thank you. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
Well, I, I think that this, this makes this, this is one of the reasons that this makes this TIF untenable is, is, is we are absolutely putting developer costs in the TIF on the backs of the taxpayers. And if I knew what that amount was, I would offer a motion to amend the project plan, but I don't. Can I offer, can I offer a motion to, is there a way to offer a motion without having the amount to amend the project plan without having to continue the whole thing, which would be out of order because we've already had a continuation motion?
Let's ask Jason Green, our City Attorney. I don't believe you'd need to pick a dollar amount.
You would need to have a specific dollar amount and a line item within the project plan to amend.
Okay, well, I guess I'm at a significant disadvantage to be able to offer an amendment because I do not know what that cost would be. But I, from a pure standpoint of principle here, I hope this council be collectively upset at the idea of, of putting, putting this, the cost of this culvert, the whole cost on the backs of the taxpayers. I, I, after all the discussion that we've had on TIFs, I can't believe that, that we would even be considering that. I also have a yes or no question for the, for the carpenters, and that is, I understand that there's a rezoning application that's been filed per an email that was sent by you to the carpenters, to the council, a rezoning application to rezone the property to residential. Is that application going to proceed? Is it, or is it, or is it your desire to, to withdraw it?
Ms. Carpenter, if you could, please?
This is why we asked for the continuation, so we could talk with our attorneys. We do not know if we will be withdrawing that. It was put in prior to any of these decisions, so we don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And then I would like the, the, if this, if this disaster passes tonight, I would like to have the, I would like to have the, the number of, of low-income lots identified and the correct number identified in the final project. And I would also like to have the, the names of the individuals involved in Doak LLC. And before members of the council hit their lights to bite my head off, I would remind them that when I brought this up at a previous item earlier in the meeting, everyone was okay with it. So I would ask for full disclosure of the members of this LLC. And there's a reason that, that this is being, that this is being requested for, for future TIFs if that amendment is ultimately approved. And that is to ensure complete fairness and transparency between the banks and, and the developer in terms of conflicts of interests and the like. And so I just ask for, for full disclosure if we could have that information, please.
Yep. Let's go to Alderman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this discussion is a wonderful example of how trying to solve problems on the fly doesn't work.
Okay, let's go on to Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Karen Bowman.
Okay.
My question would be, is understanding that this question has been asked, what, what the oversizing costs were. My understanding of a TIF is that we do not pay for developer's costs. We pay for oversizing costs, public improvement costs. So when we pass these TIFs and they, and they come to certify these expenses and there's developer costs in there, they won't get paid. Is that an incorrect statement?
Nope, that's, let's go to Karen Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the idea that we just pay for developer's costs is something that this council has stressed recently more than they have in past councils. In the past, I don't believe that we have necessarily done that. I think we have paid for total costs on some items, and I, I can't tell you for sure what those are right at this, this moment. But I believe this council is the one that is the council that's really stressing to, to pay the, just the oversizing costs. If it comes down to oversizing costs and that's all you agree to pay for, when it gets down to the finance office and they have to have those costs certified, they will certify that these are only oversizing costs and they have to, to verify that for the, the finance office to do that.
Mr. Weifenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
I guess I'll address the question to our city attorneys. I thought the tax increment districts written by the state were specific that, that's, so we just make up the rules as we go.
Let's go to Jason Green, our City Attorney.
All of the costs that are proposed to be paid in this tax increment district are capital costs as defined by the statute. The statute makes no distinction between developer costs or public costs. The idea that tax increment financing should be used only for public costs, as Ms. Bowman indicated, is a progression in the debate that this body has undertaken over the years in the course of using tax increment financing on various projects. In other projects, there have been developer costs included. Most of the time, though, the costs have been limited to city costs. I can't tell you that it's always been the rule. If the council wishes to adopt a policy that says we will only pay for city costs or oversized costs, you are absolutely free to do so.
Okay, Mr. Weifenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
I'm not sure how to word this, this question that I have because I was under the understanding that that was the only cost that we paid, and I've done a lot of research on these things. And at some point, I must have fell off the bus, but I guess I can't think of the question I need to get, get, get the answer I'm looking for. And I guess, I'll just have to defer to the, I guess the question is, is not in the city ordinance as adopted. It doesn't specifically say public improvements. That's, it does not.
You're correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Deb Hatcock.
Just a couple of comments to what a couple of people are saying. Number one, I think the four people that were talking or, as Mr. Quaker says, we're biting his head off, I think we are basing it on policy and procedure, and I don't think that has anything to do with biting your head off, Mr. Quaker, in all fairness. And number two, and I didn't mean that mean, I was just answering his question. And number two, calling this a disaster, again, sit on the other side and listen to what you're saying to these people. It's not a disaster. I voted on this not to be continued and to bring this forward because of the same reason I opposed it the first time. I had to go through this piece by piece and figure out why this was positive. And it's unfortunately that people are calling this a disaster because the drainage issues of the city have no funding source. So how can it be on the taxpayers of Rapid City when a guy is upfronting the costs? So ask yourself, when you're saying these questions, did you ask the guy that you are saying this about? Did you ask him these questions, in all fairness? Again, he's upfronting the costs on this drainage and we need help on it. So actually, that's doing a positive for the city, not a negative. It's adding and take, or taking away from what the city would have to pay. Even though operation and maintenance will be our costs, he's putting up the bigger amount. And we did thoroughly by meeting with this man. Many of the council members figured this out before we came up there and said these things about what's happening on this TIF. So I encourage you, a lot of times, you guys, if you're not meeting with the developer that's probably, or the people that are involved in this, this is probably why these issues come up at council instead of getting solved beforehand. So I encourage you to do that more, and you will probably solve the answers and not turn this into a big hoopla issue over this situation. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Tom Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I wanted to discuss something that was brought up earlier. If we create a tax increment district and sometime later zoning changes, for example, we have a small piece of commercial and zoning, after the, the district is created, zoning changes so there's not a commercial in there, it doesn't make a difference. At the time we create the different, the district is when it makes a difference. At the time this district was created, there was commercial property in the district. So therefore, that does not become a part of the discussion. And I just want to say this about tax increment districts in general. We have included developer costs in the past. We probably will in the future. Each development that you look at takes, has different needs. Now certainly, we've migrated towards little or no developer costs, but I wouldn't ever put myself in a corner where I would try and stop development. There are some areas that just flat don't cash flow and that you need to have some flexibility. I wouldn't work myself in a corner of saying absolutely none. Certainly in this TIF, they are very, very minimal. I just think it's time to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bob Hurbett.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Alderman Johnson making my job easier by saying exactly what I just wanted to say with one other comment. I think Karen was right on in saying this is the problem, trying to decide things from the dais, and I voted to continue and lost on that. So given that situation, I don't have the same heartburn on inclusion of developer's costs, but I do think that the disclosure issue is a very important one in order to maintain transparency. And also, quite simply, I can't think of a reason not to ask for disclosure. It seems to me that either, I, I don't know if we need to amend anything here to include that or if I can just, if it can just be provided for the record. It looks like Ms. Bowman has an answer.
Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The LLC that you're looking for and the names that you're looking for, I can give you those, and they've been provided to me, so.
Why don't you read them, so we can get through this?
Joe Muth, Ron Muth, Doug Muth, and Dick Muth.
So a lot of Muths?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, further discussion. I see no further lights. The motion on the floor is the original motion as amended, which was option three. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Did we have more than one no? Okay, let's have a roll call, please. Thank you.
Aye.
Hatman?
Aye.
Weifenbach? Olson? Kroger?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Hertback?
No.
Okay, motion passes on a seven to three vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We are on to item 129, please.
It's a request by Forefront Design, Inc. for Youth Performing Services for a vacation of right-of-way located at 410 East Monroe Street, and motion be for approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 130, please.
Second reading of ordinance 5367, an ordinance amending section 17.06, chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the, rezoning within described property as requested by Dream Design International for Signature Homes for a rezoning from low-density residential district to medium-density residential district. And this is located north of Country Road, east of Cobalt Avenue, and west of 143rd Street, and move for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 131, please.
131 is the second reading of ordinance number 5368, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within described property as requested by Dream Design International Incorporated for Signature Homes LLC for the rezoning from low-density residential district to medium-density residential district located north of Country Road and east of Cobalt Avenue and west of 143rd, and I move approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 132, Mr. Preston, the bill list, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The bill list totals $6,484,004.01. I would like to add two items to this. First item is the South Dakota Governmental Finance Officers. Five registrations for the finance officer school, $400. And the South Dakota Governmental Human Resources Association, six registrations for human resource school, $210 for a total, new total of $6,484,614.01.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the bill list as amended totaling $6,484,614.01. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Go to Jason Green, city attorney. Do we expect any executive session tonight?
Yes, and I'd appreciate it if the motion maker would include that the purpose is for those allowed by SDCL 1-25-2.
So moved.
Okay, expect action. We have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session as permitted under SDCL 1-25-2. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're in executive session. City attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask the council to authorize the Public Works Director to extend an offer to the candidate for the drainage engineer position at grade 22, step G.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I'd ask the council to authorize the city attorney to extend a settlement offer for the Lemon Avenue property in the amount of $55,000. Funding source to be the CIP reserve balance and authorize the finance officer to issue a treasurer's check in that amount.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Finally, I'd ask the council to direct the city attorney to proceed in accordance with the discussions in executive session on the Wildwood claim.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Anything else?
No, sir.
We have a motion, second for adjournment. Any discussion on that motion? I didn't think so. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.